Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the City of Titusville City Council Regular Meeting, July 8, 2025, at 6:30. I'm going to call this meeting to order. For the invocation, we have Pastor Blaine, First Baptist Church of Indian River. You have the floor, sir.
Our Father, we thank you for this time together in this meeting. We thank you, Lord, for our country.
We thank you, Lord, that you've blessed us. We do pray for our leaders, our president, our governor, Congress, and Supreme Court. You'd help them to make the right decisions all the time. Dear Father, we confess to you for why you do things, for why you allow things to happen. We pray tonight for the lives that were taken in the Texas flood. We pray that they're with you tonight. We pray, Father, for those that are left behind their families and friends in the community, that you would be with them in a special way to comfort and counsel them. Thank you for the help. Thank you for the volunteers, the donations that have been given. Pray that you'd help them in this time. Thank you, Lord, for the leaders down there. Help them to look ahead and maybe be able to prevent this sometime in the future. We pray for our council here tonight, that you would give them the vision to look into the future and to see what's best for our city, even when we might be gone ourselves. Thank you, Lord, for your son and all you've done for us. Help us, Lord, to be what you want us to be. May you bless this meeting tonight. Give them wisdom and understanding to act when they have to act and to wait when they should wait. May all things be done decently and ordered, and may you have all the glory. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Will you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you very much. Member Nelson can, oh, sorry, City Clerk.
Individuals wishing to speak on agenda items must complete a sign-up card prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on quasi-dedicial public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Sign-up and oath cards are available on the table. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting, and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions, but not both. No sign-up card is required. Citizens should not comment on any issues or requests, must address the pending issues, and citizens will be given three minutes to speak on all items. Citizens wishing to speak on the consent agenda must submit a sign-up card identifying the items of interest. Each speaker shall be limited to three minutes to speak on the entire consent agenda. All sign-up cards and exhibits being submitted to City Council should be placed in the box on the table.
Thank you, City Clerk. Member Nelson?
Move to approve the minutes of the regular City Council meetings on May 13th, May 27th, and June 10th, 2025. Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any discussion from council? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. City Manager?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. We have no special recognitions and presentations, and before we move into boards and commissions, I would like to take a moment to introduce the gentleman to my right. Mr. Jim Stokes is an attorney with a vast experience in municipal government. As you know, we're currently in the unique position of having both our city attorney and assistant city attorney positions vacated. So in order to provide for a continuity of services, legal services to the city, the city and Mr. Stokes have entered into a short-term professional contract for guidance, legal guidance to both city council and city staff. Now, this is a professional services contract, similar to we do with other law firms. He is not the appointed interim city attorney. That's something that could be done only by city council. And as you know, on the 12th of July, which is this Saturday, we'll be interviewing four candidates for the permanent position, and if things go well, City Council may make a selection for a city attorney. So we don't see the need right now to have Mr. Stokes appointed as an interim. However, if things don't go as well on Saturday, council may wish to decide to do that appointment at a later meeting. So.
City Manager. Mr. Stokes, anything to say?
No, just glad to be able to be here and help you out during this little break in service with your city attorney. And, you know, if any of you need anything, don't hesitate to call on me.
Thank you very much, sir. All right, on to boardings and commissions.
Sir, we're moving on to boards and commissions. 6A is the Titusville Cocoa Airport Authority. And soon as I find it. And the action is to appoint one regular member to the Titusville Cocoa Airport Authority for a term to expire on July 11th, 2028. And we have one applicant, Mr. Ken Ward, and current incumbent Roger Molliter does not wish to be reappointed.
Thank you very much, City Manager. City Clerk, are there any cards on the matter?
Yes, sir.
Is Ken Ward here?
I don't see him here.
Not seeing him. All right. Any discussion from council? Any motion to be made? Member Nelson?
I would move to appoint Ken Ward as a regular member to the Titusville Cocoa Airport Authority.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any further discussion from council? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. City Manager?
Moving on to 6B is the Titusville Environmental Commission Semi-Angl Report, and Lauralee Thompson is here to present that.
Hi, y'all. Lauralee Thompson, 3550 Irwin Avenue, Mims. So your environmental commission, as usual, stays very, very busy, and you've got a list here, but I'll add a little bit of comments on some of the stuff. We, one of the things that's different is we voted to move our officer election to January because we almost had a big mess this year because the TEC members had not been appointed, yet they had voted for officers. So had we voted for an officer that didn't get reappointed, it could have been upsetting. So we wanted to move our officer elections to January. The urban forestry and tree ordinances, there's a whole bunch of stuff here. I'm going to start with the synthetic landscaping materials ban. Well, it doesn't matter now because the Florida Legislature took care of that. So I imagine there's going to be lots of synthetic grass all over the state. The native municipal tree canopy and landscape management trust fund, we need a dedicated funding for our urban forestry program and so that we can hire a real urban forestry person. I know that we have a couple of people that have licenses that are on the planning department staff, but they have their own work that they are doing. And so they can't dedicate all of their time towards working on an urban forest. And it's going to take a full-time job for somebody, you know, to help us get our urban forestry established. So we were working on that, but that's being, that's just going to get pushed on. It's probably going to be months, and we'll see what happens. The 330-300 rule, that is a guideline for urban forestry that promotes equitable access to nature and its associated health benefits. So it suggests that every person should be able to see at least three trees from their home and live in a neighborhood with at least a 30% tree canopy cover and have access to a high-quality green space within 300 meters of where they live. So this enhanced visual connection with nature will, you know, from somebody's home or their school or their workplace, will reduce stress and improve mental well-being for people. The 30% level of tree cover is associated with various health benefits, including less mortality during heat waves, improved sleep, reduced stress, and prevention of heart disease. And those statistics come from the U.S. Forest Service Research and Development Department. Access to high-quality, well-maintained green space is considered crucial for promoting physical activity, social interaction, and overall well-being for our citizens. Fluoride in drinking water. We spent two meetings at least with it, but then the Florida Legislature came along and voted the same way we did, actually. So it's irrelevant now. The fountain functionality and aerators, we had quite a bit of discussion on converting fountains to aerators in stormwater ponds, but Sandra Reller has been way ahead of us and confirmed that there's only one fountain left in one of the city ponds, and that's at the Senior Center Pond. They don't have an aerator there, so Public Works has seeking a grant for installation of an aerator in the Senior Center Pond, too. We did, we had some discussion on the Urban Three Report, which is, that's what I handed out to you guys. It's that Thousand Friends of Florida Report that addresses sprawl, density, and tinity. And then during our February meeting, and we actually spent several meetings before February, but we reviewed the draft Natural Resources Public Engagement Report, that you guys were kind enough to hire some really good consultants to help us out with that report, and you've approved it. So I just want to say thank you for that. Now the TEC actually has a plan to work from, which we have desperately needed. Public outreach, the TEC voted to support the Wyland National Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation during their February meeting. So how did we do on that, Mr. Mayor? I know that was...
I have no idea how the results went.
We don't either. Okay. Well, we supported you. That's the main part. We supported you.
I figured it was just about raising awareness, right?
Yeah. So, and so finally, I want to get back to the ordinances on like the critical root zone and multi-family, the tree canopy and multi-family developments, and the 50% requirement to have native landscaping, 50% of the landscaping in new developments be native plants. Doesn't seem like there's a lot of heartburn over the 50% use of native plants. It's actually could, you know, be really, really good. Critical root zone, seems like there's some commenting on the critical root zone, so we'll see where that goes. And then the multi-family canopy. So, you know, the TEC had asked for a workshop, and we thought we were going to get a nice workshop where staff and TEC and the public could all work together and talk about these three ordinances. But instead, we ended up with a staff presentation at the 5:30 meeting on January 22nd. And we're happy about that. I'm not complaining. We're very happy about that. However, we respectfully request the ability not to have to wait until petitions and requests for TEC members to be able to comment. We would like to be able to comment at that agenda item. So at the special presentation meetings, you don't take comment cards for the different agenda items. We would like for you to make an exception for us so that we can make our comments along with the presentation that staff is doing, so that you can hear our comments before you guys start your discussion. And that's my humble request. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lauralee. Any questions? I'm not seeing any, so thank you very much. Appreciate you coming.
What about our humble request?
Well, we'll take it up. We'll have a conversation about it.
Okay. Well, it would be helpful, and I'm not trying to be disrespectful. It would be helpful if we knew the answer before the TEC meeting tomorrow night, because if we are allowed to do that, we would kind of like to work on what we're going to say.
Member Nelson?
Lauralee. So would it work where, when the staff was doing a presentation, say, TEC had five minutes to make their comments?
Would be limited to three minutes per person if we wait until petitions and requests. We're just asking if we can make our three-minute comments at the time, either before or after staff does their presentation, just so that you know what our thoughts are as TEC members before you start your discussion.
And you're talking specifically at special meetings, the special 5:30 meetings.
Right, yeah, the 5:30 meeting.
A council at any time could alter the rules by a vote of council. So, you know, if there was a particular item that TEC fell strongly about, they could ask council to, you know, give them that time at that particular meeting.
That would work. I mean, basically, it would be you standing up or making yourself known to one of us and saying, "On this particular item, we would like to speak."
So I just jump up out of the audience and say, "We want..."
Before the meeting, because across the board, every special presentations meeting, not every presentations meeting is TEC action items.
Right.
Yeah.
No, we're just asking for this one time.
And that would be related to these items?
Yes. That would be related to the three ordinances. The thing that you're getting the special presentation from staff about.
I wouldn't have heartburn. I would say have one person say...
Well, we don't have 10 members, so you're not going to get 10. You'd be lucky to get three or four of us.
Say, give Lauralee six minutes, seven minutes, and say, you know, sort of gather everybody's thoughts up and let us know. That would be my suggestion.
Sorry, Member Nelson, I didn't mean to cut you off. I saw the light flick off, but it was actually, Member Stokoe, did you have something?
Yeah, I was saying, just to clarify, Lauralee, I think what they're saying is typically if we had that meeting, we will amend the rules and say, you know what, we're going to go ahead and give two people 30 minutes to speak versus having everybody speak three minutes. So I think what I'm hearing, you probably have a consensus, is at that meeting, when we have that agenda item, we can then say, as council, take a vote and say, oh, we had four members show up, or we had three, let's go ahead and give them 10 or 15 minutes, whatever you guys needed to speak on that item during that meeting.
Okay. And so how do I, do I just raise my hand? How do I get recognized to be able to ask?
So once the agenda's out, so as you're making this request, and that's typically what happened on prior items, we knew that people were interested in this. And so then we, one of us would make the motion during that meeting because we know in advance that this is something that you all wanted to speak on.
Okay.
So we would just need to know, so once you have your meeting tomorrow, if you guys want to gather and say, who will be there, who can speak, how much time do we need, then you can let us know that, and then we'll make that.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lauralee. Anything else? City Manager?
Moving on to 6C is the recognition of historic structures without designations, and we have a member of the Historic Preservation Board.
Shifalo, the historic Norwood House. The recognition without designation program is a new initiative by your award-winning Advisory Historic Preservation Board. It calls for nominations and selection of notable historic, at least 50-years-old, structures that have been maintained and used in their traditional configuration. The intent is to acknowledge the owner's values for older buildings and to create in the public an awareness of local history to spur an appreciation for old places. Also, we hope to encourage the owners to pursue historic designation to further protect their properties. Recognition without designation was developed by your award-winning Advisory Historic Preservation Board based on an idea I brought back from the National Alliance of Preservation Commission's 2024 conference, where I represented the City of Titusville and your Historic Preservation Board. At the HPB Annual Workshop for the Public, we made the inaugural presentation for two residential homes. 1200 Riverside Drive, owned and maintained by Rena Singleton, and 806 Olive Avenue in Joinerville, owned and maintained by Clyde Dandridge, and two legacy businesses, the Moonlight Drive-In, especially noted for their classic neon sign, and the Launch Now for Rehabbing to its former splendor, the Old Hotel and Bank Building on the corner of Washington and Main Street. Next year, we hope to have citizen nominations and much more participation from owners of historic structures. As the program goes, we hope it develops a lot of momentum. So I want to thank you, council, for the opportunity to serve citizens of Titusville by your Historic Preservation Board. We're very active, and we really love old things. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Shifalo. All right, City Manager?
Yes, sir. We have petitions and requests.
All right, petitions and requests from the public, non-agenda items.
Casey, Orange, Maryland Avenue. On June 18, 70 children from the Isaac Campbell Community Center's summer program planted 30 native live oaks and wax myrtles in their park with the help of 25 volunteers. The mayor, city council member, thank you very much. The children were enthusiastic about this project, eagerly seizing shovels and digging holes to plant the trees. Some mentioned they had never held a shovel before. Within an hour, all 30 trees were planted, mulched, and watered. Four-foot-tall bamboo stakes mark each tree with a bright orange flag to help maintenance workers mow around, not over the trees. And I went and looked at them just today, and they're doing just great. That event was organized by the Titusville Tree Team. Now, the Titusville Tree Team seeks your permission for a tree planting event at the Blue Hole Park on Cheney Avenue, which is a city park. Parks and Recreation is agreeable with the idea for us to plant 20 live oaks and 40 bald cypress at this park. We ask your approval tonight to move forward with this plan to plant 60 trees at Blue Hole Park at no expense to the city or the county. We hope to have the event Saturday, October, August 2nd, not October, August 2nd, at 9:00. Do we have your approval for this tree planting event?
Are you yielding the rest of your time?
I am yielding my time, so hopefully I can find the answer and move forward because it's only a couple of weeks away from now. We have to plant trees in the rainy season. And so for us to do another one, we have to jump on it, so that they will be established by the time the rain all of a sudden stops, as you know, which it does. So we are asking your approval tonight, if you would, please.
Thank you very much. Member Nelson?
Well, you know, I love the idea. My question, though, is, that is hurricane season.
Yes.
Do we want to do it during hurricane season?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
And that is when the rain falls. If we wait until the hurricane season is over, then the rain will not be falling, and we will be responsible for watering these trees twice a week. And with it raining, we don't have to do that. It's been raining enough that we don't have to water the trees. But I do have a backup plan. If it stops raining for the first two months, I will make sure the trees get watered.
Okay. I'm in agreement.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Kay. Council will continue to discuss. Member Stokoe?
Yes. I like trees, and I like hearing no cost. My question would be for staff. Do we have any concerns with this, anything that we need to consider?
I've just been informed that that's a county park.
Okay, so.
A county park? Or is it a city park?
So yes, we give you permission to put trees on their park.
So we, yeah, we will give you...
If they said it's our park, then plant trees.
Okay, so that's the county park, and I don't need your permission?
Apparently not.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much.
See, we took care of it, so. All right, thank you, Ms. Kay. Petitions and requests, non-agenda items?
For the record, my name is Dwight Severs, resident of Titusville. This is the second time I've appeared before this council since the election in November. Tonight, my first item I'd like to mention is a celebration of the eighth anniversary, able to construct and dedicate, dedicate on July 10th, 2017, this splash pad. Because of my belief in giving back to the community, my wife and I don't construction of this splash pad in memory of our son and the benefit of the children and people of Titusville and surrounding area. I have provided you a copy of a news article at the time reflecting some of my family on the first page in the photographs at the dedication. I also have included dedication agreement and one copy of an exhibit attached. I call your attention to paragraph four of the agreement that was signed between myself and the city council about the use of this splash pad. We currently frequent the splash pad with our four-year-old grandson, whose name after our son who was deceased. I see the pad needs obvious maintenance. It is frequented by parents, grandparents, young children, including expectant mothers, children, adults with disabilities, enjoying the streaming water, all sitting in 90-degree temperatures. We not accommodate or provide adequate shading there at the pad, and frankly, they're mislocated and not pursuant to a lot of the original design, design as I thought it was going to be built. I respectfully... I respectfully suggest and ask that during the budgeting process that you make sure you're committed and honor the owner's agreement and honor your commitment. You have virtually no citizen type of benefits like this at parks, and do it right. You don't have to hire a consultant to do this. Secondly, you're in a crossroads of hiring into a city manager, city attorney, and based upon my years of experience with the city, I'd be more than glad to participate or provide information or background and work with anybody. And finally, I would simply like to sum up and simply say, as a firm believer, could I finish?
I can't give you extra time, Mr. Severs. Thank you.
No problem. No problem.
Member Nelson?
Um, Mr. Abate, can Public Works maybe look at this, come up with a budget for the next budget year on what needs to be done?
Yeah, we can take a look at it.
Okay.
Vice Mayor Cole?
When we did this, because my Rotary Club was a part of that, I thought parks and recs, no, it was turned over to us. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Kathleen O'Rourke, Titusville resident. Um, I see this Saturday you have a final review of the applications for the city attorney, and important. And given recent events in Titusville, we need to apply higher standards than have been evident in the past. While Attorney Richard Broome was in the role that was documented election interference in the last mayoral election, an illegal video by Chief Lau speaking out against Ms. Conklin, a candidate in the mayoral race, collusion between Andrew and Chief Lau in creating a sting election, which allowed Andrew to steal the election, following by hiring at taxpayer expense outside counsel to determine how to subvert the subpoena issued by Ms. Conklin's attorney to obtain those records. And after Mr. Broome's retirement, things went from bad to worse, with Chelsea Farrell, the acting attorney, creating a sting operation of her own in an attempt to trap a fellow city council member using fake public records requests. Chelsea resigned in the first month of service to avoid being fired. The list goes on, but I only have three minutes. Despite the fact that your job as council members is to serve the citizens, and those same citizens have requested involvement in the selection of city attorney, you have all but ignored our request. Basically, if you were my students, I'd give four of the five U N F. And rather than actively encouraging the citizens, you've done nothing to support us. Your activities for Saturday give the community, at best, a token opportunity to attend the meeting and express their opinions, which you may most likely ignore, as you have done in the past. That would be, because most of you, with the exception of Megan, have had your election funded by developers, special interest groups, and lobbyists, and it's clear that a pro-developer attorney would be the wish of these people. It would not, however, be the wish of your constituents. One applicant, Jennifer Cockcroft, is of greatest concern to me. Her prior pro-development work, along with a reference from a well-known, clearly pro-developer attorney, is evidence of how well these campaign donations may pay off for a certain lobbyist who donated heavily to your campaigns. You know who I'm referring to. We will be carefully watching to evaluate if you understand your role to be that of serving the citizens or if you have been bought off by the lobbyist, who has repeatedly stated that he counts to three for a living. Saturday will be your opportunity to correct these obvious problems. The decisions you are making in this appointment will have a significant impact on the decisions we are making about future political races.
Thank you.
Is this on?
Yes.
Okay. This is my very first time up here, so I am a little nervous. Um, my name's Mary Harvey. I live in Titusville, Florida. I've been here since nineteen seventy-nine. And the reason I'm here tonight is, I'm here tonight out of growing concern how our public meetings are managed. I could name names, but a small group of attendees continued to be consistently disruptive, yelling, pounding the podium, spreading misinformation, and turning disagreement into personal attacks. Public comments are essential, but it is, also needs to be respectful. Lately, it feels like the goal isn't civic participation, it's performance. One council member has even referred to these meetings as entertainment, encouraging, it invites more disrespect and discourages the average resident from participating. There have been repeated claims that free speech is being violated, but a review of past meetings shows a consistent pattern, individuals going off topic and refusing to follow basic procedures. That's not censorship, it's order. We can support free speech without tolerating slander, bullying, or deliberate disruption. Some residents have started calling these meetings a circus, and sadly, that's exactly what it's become. That's not democratic dialogue, it's harassment. And I, for one, am over what's going on here. So here's my ask, not to count just council, but to the community, the citizens, we need to start coming to these meetings. We need to watch them on YouTube. If you can't make it to the meetings, see what's really happening in this room. It's appalling. The council, I respectfully urge you to take action, which I'm not quite sure, I know you'd have public petitions and requests in the beginning and at the end. I don't know if it's somewhere in our laws that says that you have to have two, but you guys can't get any business done, because the same group continues to cause chaos here. People are even scared to get up here and speak because of this group. Stop filming or highlighting audience members who are not part of the discussion. Recite and enforce the rules of decorum clearly at every meeting. When they're broken, cut the mic. No questions asked.
Order.
No, it's not when I'm up here speaking. No, you keep going that way.
Hey, order.
I want, I want my minute back. Yes. Keep going, and it'll be two. Idiots. This is what, Megan, you're the one that continues to. Why did you, Megan, you never answer when I send you an email. You don't ever request. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mary. So this, this is, this is not how this meeting's gonna go. This is not how this meeting's gonna go. If anybody talks over another person when they have the floor, I will ask them to leave. We are not gonna get into this. Everybody has the right to free speech, but you also do not have the right to interrupt other people's right to free speech. Do I make myself clear? Thank you. You have the floor, ma'am.
Well, hello, my name is Pam Avery, and I live in this community. Um, I've lived here most of my life. Um, I'm just gonna kind of read what I have. I would like to say that here, um, it's scary to get up here because of the harassment that I've seen with other people that have gotten up here ongoing after they come up here and speak. So it's a lot for me, but I'll tell you why I came up here first, or why I'm even here. Because somebody stood here and compared an alleged online threat to the real violent murder of Jessie Kirk. Jessie was a light in this community, and her name was used not to honor her, but for attention. What shocked me most, honestly, was the silence from the council, I'll be honest. Not a word, no pushback. That was the moment I realized we don't start, if we don't start paying attention, we're going to lose control of our own community. So I started watching, listening, reading, and yes, connecting the dots. And I saw the pattern. It's not just one voice, it's a coordinated group, same people at every meeting, same attacks online, same drama, week after week, same playbook, stir the pot, play the victim, control the message. Let's call it what it is. It's the, they scream about corruption, but from where I stand, they've become the system they claim to be fighting. Now, here's the part that matters most. Everybody in this room knows all this already, especially you. You've been watching it, and you live it all the time. I actually started this speech a hundred times, just trying to get it perfect, but again, we don't need perfection, we need some action. We do not need to keep connecting dots, we need to start drawing lines, lines between what's right and what's rotten, between public service and personal agendas. So what's their end game? To control the narrative, to control the city and county government, to silent dissent and punish disagreement? Because from where I sit, it looks like a flowblown takeover of North Brevard led by a new girl band, featuring an activist, city council member, commissioner, her staff, and a few familiar backup singers. But this is an entertainment. This is our community, this is our future. To the council, you don't have to accept a circus. You can demand decorum, you can protect the dignity of the space. You were elected to lead, so lead. To the public, ask questions, watch the meetings, learn how things really work. Stop trusting Facebook headlines, because if we don't stand up now, we're handing over our community to the loudest voices in the room. Don't let a loud few drown out the quiet strength of a whole community. Stand up, pay attention, and love where you live. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for petitions and requests?
Long with a cover letter? Hello, Christina Michelle. I come before Titusville City Council in the name of justice for Chamari Charles. Justice carries both a universal and a deep, personal meaning. Accountability, those responsible for causing harm through direct violence, inaction, or abuse of power, regardless of title, truth is transparency. Sharing honestly, not hiding behind vague statements, delayed investigations, legal loopholes, or corrupt connections. Dignity for victims and loved ones of those harmed by acknowledging T. Ray as a human being and providing a safe space for pain, for pain to be healed. Systemic change as justice is not an outcome, but a transformation of the systems that allow for tragedy to happen in the first place. Justice is protection for the community. Are you aware that more than a thousand people signed on change.org in support of justice for Chamari? Are you aware that citizens' rights have been violated? The Eighteenth Judicial Circuit Office of the State Attorney, the same office at which Chief Lau's wife, Vanessa Lau, is employed, announced its investigation of the police killing of my childhood friend. On June tenth, the exact same day the petition accomplished its goal of one thousand signatures in support of the demands that you have in front of you. When will the raw, unedited body camera footage from February seventh be released? Has Internal Affairs concluded their investigation? I will be following up with an email. There's a lot of pain and a lot of trauma. I went to Astronaut High School with Chamari.
Thank you very much. Member Nelson?
Uh, Mr. Abate, do we know if the I A's been done?
Are you talking about the police department?
Correct.
Yes, they have concluded their internal review, and the two officers involved will be returning to active duty in the near future. And I know that the chief is, uh, going to be releasing the unedited body cam. He has received nine separate public records requests. I spoke with him today, and he's supposed to give me a certain date here in the next couple days.
If I remember right, the I A's are confidential.
I believe so, yes.
Okay. So that would not, he would not receive those.
Thank you, Member Nelson. You have the floor.
Everybody know who I am. I'm Chamari Simone, for those that don't know. And y'all can call it a circus or whatever, and I told y'all in the last meeting, I'm gonna continue coming here until I feel like we getting, you know, new leaders, people that's being treated fair. I feel like, um, y'all holding, dragging my son case out, putting out that footage. You know, we want the, all the evidence to my attorneys, give everything to my attorneys. Um, I'm gonna continue coming here until I get justice for my son. I'm not gonna stop. I'm gonna keep coming here, saying what I wanna say. So for those that think it's a circus, it's just begun, 'cause I'm not stopping. I'm gonna come every meeting, I'm gonna say what I wanna say, and I'm gonna keep asking for the truth. You know, we would, all we want is chief to do what's right, and they did. You know, that's all. And I'm gonna keep coming until we get a new chief, a new mayor, a new board, new people, whatever it takes, I'm gonna keep fighting for my son until I get justice. So whoever don't like it, calling it circus, whatever, my team not stopping. We're not stopping. I'm fighting for Chamari, justice for Chamari, 'cause what happened to my son should have never happened to my son. Shouldn't have never happened, and I'm, I'm not stopping. So I just wanna let her know that. We're not gonna come up here being disrespectful, we're not gonna, you know, do nothing out of, we ain't supposed to. But we're gonna come up here and keep saying what we wanna say. We're gonna keep fighting, it's not gonna stop. And I'm gonna, over y'all heads, I'm gonna keep fighting for my son. And I don't care what y'all say, it wasn't right, y'all know it wasn't right, y'all holding public records, y'all dragging my son out. It's too many games, and T P D is getting exposed for everything they doing. We're gonna continue fighting.
Thank you very much. Member Nelson?
Mr. Abate, can Chief Lau let the attorney know when the unedited, uh, body cam footage will be available?
I'll speak with him tomorrow and inform him, yes.
Okay, and I, I wanna add something, um, because there was an insinuation that Vanessa Lau had something to do with this. Vanessa Lau is a judicial assistant, um, to a judge in Seminole County. A judicial assistant is somebody who schedules hearings, who handles paperwork for the judge. It would be like saying, state attorney, and told him what to do. It, that just doesn't happen. She has nothing to do with the state attorney's office. She has never had anything to do with the state attorney's office. Her only duties are to assist her judge administratively. She is an employee of the Florida State Court System, just like the public defenders, just like the state attorneys, um, everybody else. But the judicial branch is separate from the attorneys. There is not a connection, other than us picking up the phone and saying, I need a hearing on such and such matter. That would be the extent of it. So I just wanna make sure that you understand that she really has nothing to do with this.
Thank you, Member Nelson. Sir, you have the floor.
How you doing? My name is Brooks Mitchell. I'm not really a city hall type guy, right? But Chamari was my cousin. So when I come in, we talking about trees and everything else before we address this subject, it seems a little disrespectful, so I understand why the community is in such an uproar. Like, we haven't forgotten. Like, we haven't forgotten that most of the guys that I see on the council came to this land and took it from Indians like myself and set up their own systems on our land and now enforce laws on our land. And so I sit in front of the council today and ask, have we forgotten? Have we forgotten that this was somebody else's land in whatever year that you guys showed up and decided that this was your land? Extortion, murder? But now we play along in a little system where I have many penitentiaries that escaped. And now I have to listen about trees? Before you mention my cousin? When you guys are really not as powerful as you think you are? Certain people allow you guys to play in positions like Monopoly? I just ask that we all, our actions and decisions from this day forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Petitions and requests, non-agenda items.
Shifalo Tropic Street. I'd like to speak about the passing of a very vocal local activist, Dwight Siegler. He's come before other groups that I'm a member of, the Concerned Citizens. He has spoken to represent many different aspects of the transgressions against his community with suggestions for the betterment of his community. He's run for office several times. He's a local historian. He carried a lot of knowledge about the things that have happened, the things that should have happened he had opinions about. And I would just like to acknowledge in public and before council, since he can't come anymore, the Louis Ray Mortuary from four to six, that's on Hopkins Avenue. And the funeral will be on Saturday at 10 o'clock at the Grove Church. I just want to bring his name and his memory and his legacy into the room, to council, to our city government, and to the public that may be watching on YouTube, and to those in the room. Dwight Siegler. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shifalo. Any other petitions or requests from the public, non-agenda items? Yes, sir.
How you doing, Mr. Conner? Hey, my name's Ahmad Adams and I'm new to the Titus area. I'm looking, really, I see what's going on and there's a lot going on in our city. I agree with the young, the young man that was here said, we got to hear about the trees before we, you know, it's kind of, kind of deep. I was thinking the same thing. But my agenda, I'm going to be a native. I mean, I'm not going to be a native, but I'm a, a new resident in y'all city, in y'all city, basically. And what I want to do is I'm trying to help the young. I want to form like a club where we can have a, I want some gentleman club type stuff with the youth. I'm not trying to stop nobody from doing what they doing. I just want to talk to the kids, you know? I'm retired after game. I'm a, I was a, I'm an ex-con. I was in the fans. I did 15 years. I've been home since 2021. And I just want to give back to a community. It doesn't really matter what community, but this is where I'm planting my roots. So I spoke to you earlier and I told you what I was on. So I don't know what everybody got going on, but I just want to, anybody that's in our communities, I want some phone numbers. Give y'all my number. They supposed to be doing, I got a couple of guys I deal with, they doing bookbag drives, haircuts. I just want to try to see what we can do with that. That's all I got to say.
Thank you very much, sir. I did appreciate our conversation today. Member Nelson?
Sir? Sir? I'm sorry. Have you met Willie Taylor?
I made that suggestion earlier today.
Did you? Willie runs a boxing club. He was a junior Olympian and boxing club is down at the Gibson Center. And I think you would enjoy meeting him. He has a huge group of kids, Young Center. And he, he has a full-time job. He's a police officer, but he also runs the boxing club. And his heart is with the kids.
Yeah.
And, and helping the community.
Yeah, Mayor told me this morning to check out a couple of people that's not here. I appreciate you too, man, but I feel like, I don't know what's going on in the city. Like, I really, I do care, but it's like, it's way, it's, it's, it's different. I think we need to prioritize and really understand what's going on inside the community. Like, really what's going on? Trees, come on, man.
Thank you very much. Anybody else for non-agenda items, petitions and requests? Gone once, gone twice, sold. City manager?
Moving on to consent agenda, we have a pretty lengthy consent agenda. We have 19 items. Are there any items which council wishes to pull?
Member Muscoso?
Yes, not necessarily pull. I do have quite a bit of discussion for some of them. One I think I would like to pull is 8A, which is Canaveral Heights. And then I would also like to pull 8O, which is the Gibson Septic. Not necessarily for a separate vote, but more, just more discussion if possible.
Well, you're, if you're pulling it, it's pulled.
Okay, well, I'll pull it for a vote then.
You're pulling it for a vote?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So you pulled two items, 8A and 8O. Member Stokel?
I don't think I want to pull. I have a question of staff for 8C.
Is there, anybody want to pull any other items? Member Nelson?
I don't want to pull it, but I'd like some clarification on G. Oh, that's one where the amount was 49,900. So if you could clarify that, I'd appreciate it.
All right, well, we'll get into all of that. We have two items pulled, A and O. City clerk, are there any cards on consent?
Yes, we have A and then another individual that would like to speak on 8E and 8L and then one additional card for 8E.
Okay.
So AE and L.
Okay, so the person who put the card in for 8A, that's a separate item. We're going to consider B through M, or B through N during this first time. So can you call the cards for those folks? Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll go ahead and read B through M for the record. Consent agenda item 8B, interlocal agreement with Brevard County for address assignment services. Approve the advisability to complete an interlocal agreement for address assignment services with Brevard County. 8C, Florida Department of Commerce planning technical assistance grant for housing affordability study. Approve the grant request to the Florida Department of Commerce grant in the amount of $75,000 to conduct a housing affordability study. 8D, U.S. Department of Transportation Safe Streets for All SS4A Grant. Approve the grant request to the United States Department of Transportation Safe Streets for All SS4A Grant in the amount of $136,000 and local match in the amount of $34,000. 8E, Urban Forest Management Consulting Services. Approve the final scoring awarding the contract to Sosin Environmental Group, West Des Moines, Idaho, and authorize the staff to conduct final negotiations with the firm not to exceed $100,000. 8F, funds transfer to, for child. Use the Public Education and Child Occupancy Protection Program. Approve the purchase of 32 Cars AG Task Order AECOM TO 08 for fire station humidity assessment and remediation plan. Approve the award of Task Order Number AECOM TO 08 to ACOM for the amount of $49,900 to provide engineering consulting services, including but not limited to services related to conducting condition assessments relating to high humidity at fire stations 11 and 13. 8H, chiller replacement, City Hall. Approve the replacement of the chiller at City Hall in the amount of $317,813 by Train U.S. Incorporated. 8I, vendor of record VA Paving, Goodson Pavement and Preferred Materials Incorporated. Approve the addition of VA Paving Incorporated, Goodson Paving and Preferred Materials to the approved vendor of record for paving services and asphalt concrete not to exceed $75,000 annually. 8J, budget amendment for stormwater assessment mailing. Approve the budget amendment for $25,000 to fund the printing and mailing of the stormwater assessment notice to approximately 23,870 properties in the city. 8K, Save Our Indian River Lagoon Cost Share Agreement 25-269 Coleman Pond Circulator. Approve the Save Our Indian River Lagoon Project Cost Share Funding Interlocal Agreement 25-269 between the City of Titusville and Brevard County in the amount of $126,021 in funding toward the installation of the Coleman Pond Circulator. 8L, Save Our Indian River Lagoon Cost Share Agreement 25-270 Tennessee Street Baffle Box. Approve the Save Our Indian River Lagoon Project Cost Share Funding Interlocal Agreement 25-270 between the City of Titusville and Brevard County in the amount of $514,794 in funding toward the installation of the Tennessee Street Baffle Box. And 8M, Save Our Indian River Lagoon Cost Share Agreement 25-271, the Osprey Pond Circulator. Approve the Save Our Indian River Lagoon Project Cost Share Funding Interlocal Agreement 25-271 between the City of Titusville and Brevard County in the amount of $86,394. Oh, then?
Is that all of them?
No, actually, 8N as well. Award contract for the Harry T. Moore Social Service Center COVID Response and Prevention Facility Improvements. Approve the award of the Harry T. Moore Social Service Center COVID Response and Prevention Building Improvements to Doug Wilson Enterprises of Merritt Island in the amount of $80,859.89 for the construction of various improvements to address COVID prevention within the Harry T. Moore Social Service Center. That's it.
Thank you, City Manager. City clerk?
Yes, sir. Kaseen Ange for items E and L.
Kaseen Ange, Maryland Avenue. In regards to 8E, Urban Forest Management. Please approve and move forward with awarding the contract to EOCEN Environmental Group for an Urban Forest Management Plan. EOCEN is a national company with 600 employees and 200 certified arborists working in 28 states for the last 25 years. I've read their entire proposal, their reviews from other communities, and all the other documents in this agenda packet regarding this item. I am eager for the development of an urban forest management plan. We need an urban forest management plan to help preserve Titusville's ancient live oaks, sable palms, and wildlife habitat. We need a management plan to help prioritize tree planting in our parks and along our streets to help reduce temperatures and provide tree equity throughout our community. Trees and the shade that they provide helps to prevent temperatures raising, rising above our ability to live comfortably. No amount of air conditioning can help it if it's 125 degrees. We need to plant and preserve trees to help reduce temperatures, reduce flooding, and reduce polluted stormwater runoff into the lagoon, which provides a lot of economic development for our community. We need a management plan as a roadmap to enhance and preserve our urban forests, which makes Titusville a unique community in Brevard, a gateway to nature and space. Thank you very much, City Council, for considering this. Trees are an important factor for our community. We have many issues in our town, but trees help our community be healthier. It helps reduce problems with our health because we can now go outside and sit under a tree and, and communicate with our neighbors. And so it helps develop a sense of community and quality of life. As well, I'd like to speak on 8L, which is a baffle box for Tennessee Street. That's a block from our house. So, well, I'm excited about this. This baffle box will treat runoff from 673 acres of highly developed land prior to discharging into the Indian River Lagoon. And that lagoon provides a whole lot of money to our community. Yes, please use my half cent sales tax toward the $514,000. They cost a lot of money, these baffle boxes, but apparently that's, that they're worth it. They have made a difference.
Thank you, Ms. Kay.
Thank you very much.
City clerk?
Laurlee Thompson for item E.
Laurlee Thompson, 3550 Irwin Avenue, Memes, Florida. So, yes, absolutely. When I looked at the packet and I saw that there was only one, one vendor that actually turned in a proposal, I was like, oh, no. But then after I read it and looked at it and looked at all the comments from other people, please, yes, that, that looks like a really good company and a really good fit for us. And then I also wanted to give a big shout out to Sandra Reller for the three cost share projects from the Save Our Indian River Lagoon program and the huge grant for, from DEP for the Gibson Street hookup for sanitary sewer. We are so lucky to have Sandra working for our city. I mean, I, I sit on the Citizens Oversight Committee for the half penny sales tax and so we see presentations all the time. And every year, every time the slide shows up, you know, as our, in our presentation, and Titusville is always number one. You know, for the number of grants that any community or entity, we even beat the zoo every single year. And, you know, we are really, really lucky. I mean, when you add it up, it's $1.4 million worth of, of money that she has brought into our community. So we're very blessed to have her. Thank you so much, Sandra.
Thank you very much. City clerk? Is there any other cards?
No more cards for these items.
All right, council discussion. Member Nelson?
I suggested that Sandy get an extra day off. Kevin said no.
But during that time, Splash had a break.
Oh.
Yeah, so she's not allowed to.
Okay, yeah. Any rate. I think our projects are great. I'm hoping that Amy Matthews, where, will do a write-up about some of these projects. They're great projects. And I hope that people start understanding what these projects are actually doing for our community. And I actually got an email when I was on break from Spencer Molitor. And he was saying, in the shallows, he's brilliant, 90% seagrass, right on the islands, 90% seagrass. He said, I'm seeing crab traps. I'm seeing dolphins. He said, I'm actually seeing people who have homemade signs selling clams, which, as we discussed, might not be real legal. But there are people out there clamming and, I'm ready to eat clams, but apparently some people are. So it just, it says thank you to Public Works for the work you've done.
I believe you had a question for staff on item G? I believe you had a question for staff on Item G. Did you have a question for staff on Item G?
I did. The price, Mr. Abate?
Yes, as we discussed earlier, there's a, the request is for $49,900, and the actual budget amendment is $65,000, so there's a difference of about $15,000. And Kevin Cook pointed out that in the contract, there's a provision for $15,000 of added work once the humidity assessment is done, and that's what the provision is for, for an additional change order to the contract to have the money in the budget already.
So, that would come in as a change order?
That's my understanding, unless Kevin has...
It would probably be about a different vendor, but yeah, be within the same project.
Okay.
Sarah, I believe you had some questions? Sorry, Member Stokel.
Yes, okay. On Item C, and this was probably a question for Brad, just because I know you weren't in the briefing. I just wanted clarification because we've talked about the housing affordability study. Could you just clarify for me? We've talked about what we wanted. I think we said we didn't, we weren't interested in inclusionary zoning, and we didn't want to use our own funds for a study at this time. So, is this requesting for us to get this grant? It's not a matching grant, so we would only do this study?
It's a study to determine the efficacy of those options.
Okay.
And all the other options that may be available to us. So, the result would be is a study.
Okay, and we're not funding any from our budget?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Member Stokel. Does anybody have any other comments for discussion for Items A through N? City Manager?
Well, actually, I might want to entertain a motion for B through N, and A and O were pulled.
Sorry, did I say A through N? I was trying to omit it. I omitted it in my mind, B through N. I apologize. If not, then I'll take a motion. Member Nelson?
Move to approve consent agenda items B through N.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any further council discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Now, we're on to Item 8A. So, City Clerk?
We have one card. It's Tony Shifalo.
Shifalo, Tropic Street. I've been following this project since 2017, and I have been in constant contact with your city planner, Brad Parrish. I have numerous emails and responses from him, and I find that since 2017, Mr. Parrish, that comprehensive plan amendment are the same after all of these years and all of these different versions of the plan that we've been getting. It's all the same. So, I am here to speak in favor of allowing him to set yet another community meeting where we can bring our objections and suggestions for the comprehensive plan that I might point out was originally presented by my friends, Kemley Horn, the nightmare on Tropic Street, I call it. Please, let him have another meeting with the community so that once again, I can present just a few. I mean, there's not that many objections. I just want controlled infill because we're talking about a place now, you don't have any more room downtown to develop, and so you're looking in my neighborhood and the Joinerville neighborhood. We have some definite ideas about how it should be developed, and I don't see them reflected in this report anytime, from any version, year after year. Brad, how does that happen that still Tropic Street is going to be considered up there with Main and Garden and not be just a regular little neighborhood street? So, I would really like to have yet another community meeting where I can talk about it without being constrained to three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I ask Tony a question?
Yes.
Tony, so, looking at the agenda packet, I'm sure you probably looked at the strike through what was proposed. Did you have, I don't know how we'll move forward with it, but did you have anything that stood out to you on those few pages that was taken out or was added that you...
Since the plan was originally presented back in, which version should I go back to? I've got a version from 21324. I've got a version back to 1224. I've got 11724. I've got November of '23.
So, with this one...
There have been no changes.
So, with this one that's presented, did you see something on here that you did not like, that you felt should absolutely not be in there?
Yes, I have some very specific things. Let me find my latest email. I particularly object to the incentives offered developers such as increased height and density for very little amenities other than what should be expected from a new development in this target area. I'm very concerned about the proposed changes to the GOPs to the future land use of the Comp Plan Policy 17.7. The city shall define and designate infill development. I find that completely objectionable and dangerous for the community without any kind of guidance other than what the Kemley Horn suggested, like three-story townhomes on small lots, because with the Live Local Act and things like that have happened, the overlay for the West Titusville abolishes minimum lot and unit sizes while maintaining traditional setbacks for single-family homes, but nothing for multi-unit construction, which with the Live Local and the Affordable Housing Act, the infill that I see on the empty lots that have been cleared, you know, due to urban, what do they call it, when they would raise houses in poor neighborhoods, urban renewal? Well, yeah, we're eliminating blight, but it's really urban renewal. To make room for this infill, I'm concerned about the lack of restrictions to developers on infill. I could go into that in more detail later. I'm also very concerned, for example, about Tropic Street as a Category B street when it really, because the B categories call for 15-foot right-ofways with 8-foot sidewalks and 7-foot tree space, and Tropic Street between the railroad tracks and Park Avenue is already pretty much developed and has, you know, little 4-foot sidewalks on each side of the street, and I'm...
You don't think it's compatible?
Who are we going to do that kind of stuff? And I just, let me say this, Ms. Stokel, if I may. I went, and I spoke to Brad about this just prayerfully. I haven't gone into detail with him, but I recently went back to Atlanta, where I lived most of my adult life, and in a neighborhood that I had lived in and witnessed the infill that has occurred there in the 10 years or so that I've been here and not there. And I was rather pleased with the way that the infill blended so nicely with what was already there. And I'm so afraid that with the Kemley Horn suggestions, especially for the overlay of the, which is coming later, and Brad has explained to me, it's different than the Comp Plan, but the Chapter 29, Article 10 of the, geez, Brad, what is it? Is it the future land use or whatever? It's actually the zoning, that I'm concerned that with the lack of control of the West Titusville overlay abolishing minimum lot and unit sizes while main, it's going to be a problem that is going to allow developers to come in and do infill in this area that is not going to be consistent with the scale and the tone and the rhythm of the, those are my concerns, and those are the kinds of things that I have talked with Brad many times. Obviously, I have many notes, and nothing's changed. So, no, I didn't see anything new. It's the same old same old same old that's been going on, and I wonder why, with all the community input that's been put, why there have been no changes to some of those things?
Thank you.
Thank you for asking.
Counsel? Member Roscoe, so you did pull this item?
Yes.
Sorry, I must have turned away right as your name popped up.
All right, thank you. So, my question is kind of about the density bonus, and I did email Brad about this. He offered to meet with me, and I wasn't able to make that happen, so I appreciate you reaching out, because it is a residential density bonus up to five units per acre, and it can be granted for improving parks, landscaping, participating in construction of enhanced public, like streetscapes and plazas, adding additional parking. My question is, I don't feel like there are clear definitions of what that is in the LDRs. It says, "Provide a significant public benefit as defined by the Land Development Code." And then the Land Development Code doesn't quite explain that from what I was able to see. So, are we going to be updating our LDRs? Because I don't feel comfortable voting on it. Also, I think that this is a really big deal to be on the consent agenda. I know that we've discussed this multiple times, but we're not only talking about Canaveral Heights or this little area. We're actually, and I did email you about this, we're talking about a much wider area. This is for our whole comprehensive plan, so this will affect gateways, and if you want to speak to that, this will affect a few other areas, not just this. So, for this to be on the consent agenda, even though we've talked about this for a long time, it feels like a big deal because we are changing our comprehensive plan. So, my first question to you, Brad, is, is there going to be a clear definition in the LDRs? Because if a developer comes in and says, I want my, you know, my bonus, and I've put in one extra tree, or I've added a parking spot, is that going to qualify? Are we going to have something that we can look at and say, yes, this qualifies, this doesn't? Because it seems very, like, they might be able to kind of wiggle and get those density bonuses if it's not concrete.
Yes, you brought up the same concern last time we were in a previous presentation, so we did consider that. We worked with Kemley Horn, and they brought out this. The task that we were given by City Council a couple of years ago on this was a comprehensive plan amendment that included the code, so you could see both together. And we did show that, those drafts, to you. What's being presented to you tonight is just the comprehensive plan, because at a previous meeting, it was decided, let's go forward with that. And so, we're asking if it's permission to go forward with advertising and public hearing. As far as the density and the incentives, the bonuses that are in here, it's on page 71 of your packet. You'll see under that new strategy, 1.11.4.5. If you remember, the comprehensive plan is a guiding document. It's a policy document. It's not supposed to be, it's a regulatory document, but the language in there is more general in nature, providing guidance as far as how to implement those policies. You do that in the code itself to get more specific. So, we did show you a version of what that draft code will look like, but I don't have it here in this agenda item because the request specifically is about the comprehensive plan amendment. So, you'll see the incentives here under that strategy of...
Sorry, what page are you on?
On page 71 of your packet. You'll see Strategy 1.11.4.5. This is really the meat of the whole thing. So, this was something that was really encouraged and recommended by the consultant when they studied this area a couple of years ago, that there should be some way to incentivize more unique types of development that allow for infill in this area with some incentives. So, you're going to do, you'll give you something, give something back. That's basically negotiation with the developers. So, this provide, these bullet points here underneath that strategy provides some pointers that we could use and incorporate into the comprehensive plan. We can't go above and beyond what's here in this policy, so we can't introduce a density or incentive or something not be in conflict here. Remember, you can't do anything in conflict with the comprehensive plan. So, the code itself gets more specific. I don't have, again, don't have, in the agenda here, was shown to you previously. I can certainly bring it back and show you. It was presented at the last community meeting that was Ms. Shifalo attended, and if you remember, Mr. Connors, you were there, but I think you left just before you saw the before and after renderings of conceptions, conceptual drawings of how this code could be implemented that was shown to the public, and then we showed that to you at a presentation of a few meetings that goes well. Again, I can bring all this back to you, but again, the specifics about how to implement these comprehensive plan policies are in the code. Now, the code gets much more detailed as far as what those incentives are and defines them a little bit better. I believe you were concerned about whether we're giving away the farm, and we can certainly evaluate it again. We don't believe we are. We believe this is a good framework, what the code says, for us to negotiate with the developer that will allow you to go five units above what the maximum density allows, provided you provide X, Y, and Z, or whatever that might be. The question, though, that with the public has always been, well, what should that incentive be? Should be one or two incentives, or maybe a whole slew of them? We worked with the consultant, and they suggested in this particular area, because of the low-density area, you probably only want to identify one particular incentive you really want to get back from them. We can add more if we want to. We want to make the code a little more stringent if we need to. So, like the gateway quarters, comprehensive plan policies, and the downtown policies that were previously adopted by you, we're under the task, we're under the gun now, to now come up with code that implements those policies. Same here. If this amendment is okay with you to go forward with advertising, and it is transmitted to state and back to you, the changes that Ms. Shifalo is concerned about, I've had many meetings with her. I have tried to resolve some of the concerns that she has had and expressed to me on numerous occasions. I believe we've made some tweaks here and there, and I think even on Tropic Street, we are, we have made, you know, note tasks that we need to evaluate whether that particular street needs to be re-categorized, and that is something our consultant will work with. But that's at the code stage. It's not the comprehensive plan stage. One other thing I do want to bring up to you is on page 76 of your packet. The previous amendments we brought to you related to downtown and to the gateways were text amendments. They were changing, they were creating land use overlays, if you will. They did not include a map amendment. This particular amendment, in addition to the text amendment, which we have here on the agenda, we have a map amendment, and you'll see on page 76 of your packet. The areas that are identified as urban mixed use will be expanded into that larger study area that's bounded in that red line on that page. You'll see on page, again, page 76 of your packet. So, if this map amendment is approved, the policies and texts that you see on the previous pages, which is the text amendment of the comprehensive plan, related to the urban mixed use land use category, will apply to this larger area. Those incentives, which I described, those bonus incentives, to be utilized in a much larger area than the current urban mixed use configuration right now. So, in that study area on page 76, you'll see that those bonus incentives could now be used if this is approved between Garden Street and South Street, the railroad tracks on the east side, and all the way over to just a little bit past Park Avenue. I know that's a lot of information. I'll try and answer any more questions you have.
Yeah, I think I just, I find it difficult because we are voting, I understand that the code is going to come later, but we are voting on something like bonus density, density bonus, without really knowing what that definition is going to be. So, I'm trying to be very open-minded about that. I really am. I just don't want a developer to come in and say, you know, I really want it to be clear. And so, I would like to have a better understanding is that, what does landscaping look like? I just don't want someone to come in and take advantage and get five extra units.
We can bring this back together with the code so you can see... We can bring this back together with the code, so you can see...
Alrighty. We're back on. We'll give a, thank you. We got to give council members a few minutes to come back in. Alright, I got to wait for two more people to come back. Yes. Alright, we're going to get started in one minute. One minute. One minute. I'm calling this meeting back to order. Guys, are you ready in the back? Great, thank you very much. Alright, Mr. Parrish, I'm just trying to remember where we left off. I think Member Muscoso was still asking some questions of you. I'll let you guys pick it back up.
Brad, I'm okay. If you don't mind just providing me with that, we can have this conversation outside of the meeting. So, if you don't mind, if you could provide me with, like, the LDRs and those changes, I think we can move forward from this item.
Thank you, Member Muscoso. Member Stokel.
Yes, just a few items. One, to clarify, so if we do pass this, we won't be voting on anything changes. We'll just be setting the dates for this to come before us, and we can still make changes. So, that makes me feel more comfortable. There are a couple of things that I did want to clarify. With the density bonus, I was under the assumption, maybe this is my fault, that that would be for the downtown area. But am I reading this correctly, that it's for downtown and West Titusville?
The one for the downtown was approved, the policies, the previous amendment. And there'll be a code change separate on that one. But the ones you see here on page 71 are for this particular neighborhood.
Okay, so we already have approved the one for the downtown.
Correct.
Okay, so this, that's good for us to know. We already have one for downtown. Do we want to have one for West Titusville? Okay. And then, could you explain, because I am looking on page 76 with the map, could you explain the terms of the commercial that we'll be getting rid of, and in terms of the residential that we'll be getting rid of with this overlay?
So, this amendment is strictly just a comprehensive plan amendment. It's not a rezoning of property.
Okay.
So, several pieces of property there off of Park Avenue that have commercial zoning. The land use, if it's changed, will envelop that particular property that has that zoning, but it won't change the zoning. In other words, it'll continue to be allowed, to be permitted for commercial use. But even though the land use is mixed-use, they'd still only be restricted to commercial, unless they want to rezone it. So, what the land use allows you to do is potentially rezone it from commercial to residential or mix it, if you want, depending on the zoning district, without having to change the land use in the future.
So, urban mixed-use is either, can be either commercial or residential? And then, when we're talking residential, can it be, is it medium, low, and high density? All three?
In the land use itself, let me go back to page 71 of your packet. I believe the density's there. I'm sorry, just one moment.
No, you're fine, thank you.
I believe that urban mixed-use land use category is 20 units per acre currently.
Okay.
Yes.
Twenty, okay. Is that, is that more intense or less intense than medium?
Medium density right now, oh, low density is five units, and medium density is 10 units, and the high density is 15 units. So, this particular land use category, as it currently stands, is 20 units per acre.
Okay, so it would allow for more density than this, if needed? Okay. And then, my last question, I think that would be helpful, because I did notice it was one of the incentives, is the workforce affordable housing? Can we, and maybe not, you know, with this item necessarily, because we keep hearing a lot about affordable housing, workforce housing, is there a way for us to get some type of statistics in relation to how, what's our ratio of affordable housing compared to communities around us, compared to other communities in Florida? Just so we can get an idea to know what our affordable housing offerings are?
That study that you approved, the grant, for us to submit that grant, that study will help determine that.
Okay, perfect, okay, thank you.
Any further council discussion? Alright, I'll entertain a motion. Member Nelson? You're going to have to yell.
Move to approve consent agenda A.
Second.
I have a motion, and I have a second. Any further council discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Now, on to consent item 8O. Alright, is...
Sure. So, this one is about the $700,000 grant from Septic Sewer for Gibson Street. So, I just had a few questions about that. First of all, Sandy, if you got the grant on this, thank you so much.
Thank Ashley Smith on this one.
Okay, thank you, Ashley Smith. We appreciate it. I mean, so I think this is, I believe this is kind of pushed down from the state, something that we're going to have to do. And so, there are a lot of benefits, obviously, for the Indian River Lagoon. But my question is, is there still going to be some cost for it up? You know, just the average connection fee could be $2,000 to $5,000, and we're talking about 34 homes, I think, off of Gibson Street and in that area. Do we have a plan of how, how, are we going to help these people with these costs? Do we have anything? I was looking at what other cities do, and some of them do, like, a special assessment, or there are payment plans. I know that if I was told, or family was told, "You're going to have to connect," we need to know in advance to be able to save that money. And also, it's not just the connection. It's also what to do with the septic tank after. There's a lot of cost involved in this. So, I'd just like to know what the plan is with the community.
Yeah, so there's, so you're correct. There are two different functions there. One is the connection fee to the city, which is currently 2,100. It'll be going up a little higher at the end of this year. That currently has a way to be paid over 24 months on your utility bill. There is no mandatory connection in the city Titusville, so anyone with an existing septic tank does not have to connect. They can choose to.
Oh, okay.
But in a one-year period, they will start paying for sewer availability, whether they connect or not. In the future, if they try to get a new septic tank, they'll be denied that permit by the state, because once a sewer system is available, you cannot get a septic permit. Additionally, the state will be moving to the point they're not going to issue permits inside the B-maps in this area anyway, for septic availability. So, by 2030, they won't have the option of using a septic tank anymore, anyway. So, that's the city connection side. As I say, we give them a 24-month period on their utility bill. That's in the code. That certainly is something that could be modified to extend time. That could be done differently. They do have one year before that period would become even starting. If they choose not to connect for a full year, they won't pay anything. So, they'd have a year to save up to pay that fee. Plumbing permit is when they pay that fee. The other side is the abandonment of your septic tank and the plumbing cost to connect. So, Save Our Indian River Lagoon does have opportunities for grants. There's a pool of grant money that can go through SORAL to get a grant to assist with that process. We currently don't have a grant program for that. If that's something the council would like us to look at, we can. We've only done this currently. One other location, we didn't have any requests for grants from the city. I believe they did reach out to SORAL. We do have other people that reached out to SORAL to get benefits. They're inside the basin, so they would get some benefit on a SORAL grant. That is, money goes quickly in that program, because, as you know, Palm Bay's currently in a mandatory connection cycle, where all their septic's are going to mandatory connections. Cocoa Rockledge are both doing septic sewer projects. Their same individual will be reaching for grants for those as well, for the connection. So, I think that's the two sides of that. We have some ways, in addition to them being able to wait a year. I will say that when we did it on Echo recently, we found, I think of the eight properties, five of them were at the point their septic tanks were failing, and they had to either invest in a new septic tank or make the connection. They found that that new tank was going to cost more than the connecting to sewer. So, those homes were able to move over to the sewer system. But we certainly can come back with some options that the council would like to see us look at a grant program to assist.
Yeah, and what would be the average for each home to connect? I mean, maybe $100 a month, but there are additional fees.
Yeah, that would be our impact fee, our connection fee would be, it's $2,100 a day, so it's spread out over 24 months, assuming they wait the full year to start it. They have about a three-year period of payback. I think the last I heard from SORAL, anywhere from $12,000 to $16,000 is what it's going to cost to abandon, do the plumbing. Depending on the way you dispose of the tank, and depend on how expensive it is. Some tanks are able to be left in the ground and filled. They have to dig them up, that's a different service. So, a lot of that's case by case. But I think they could see costs as high as $12,000 to $16,000.
Yeah.
That's the good thing about not going to mandatory connection, where they must connect immediately. They have the option of waiting until the, so what you don't want to do is have somebody who just put a brand-new tank in the ground. We put sewer in, we say, "You must connect now." So, now they pay twice, essentially.
Do you think it would be possible, I'm not sure how you're notifying the residents, but to possibly hold a community meeting? And so, I know in that street, there's a lot of older people. And, you know, if I got something like that, I might not understand all the details. And so, if it would be possible, I would love, if we had a community meeting, I'd love to go to it, and just to make sure the residents are aware. And that could possibly be after, if we discuss options for grants. I just don't want anyone to not really understand, and then, all of a sudden, have a big bill, or even $100 for, you know, some people. It's a lot. And so, I just want to make sure that we're at least preparing people and letting them know some upcoming costs.
Yeah, we can do that. We always, when we do extend sewer, we do give them a letter. Once the project is cleared, they would have seen the construction by that point. They would have had notifications a month in advance. But they get a letter notifying them that sewer is available. They have 365 days before there's any impact to their property as far as our billing system bringing in sewer availability fees. So, that's standard practice today. We certainly can expand that as timing. This project hasn't been designed yet, but during that process, we could certainly reach out to the residents.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful if we just had, like, a little meeting for an hour, and let residents just ask questions, just like I'm getting to ask questions now.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Kevin, real quick, if we said yes tonight, how long do you think that this project would be up and running?
I'd guess we'd probably have six months to design it, and probably a good...
Okay, thank you. Member Stokel?
Yes. I think that the Save Our Indian River Lagoon does have the grants. So, I think to what Member Muscoso is saying, if we could find out information to give to citizens on how to access that money, that's where our half-cent sales tax is going to. So, we're already putting money, that's where I would like to see happen.
Yeah, we usually, we give them that information, and I believe we did have a community meeting that they would be willing to come to get...
Thank you.
Member Nelson?
Well, the other question is, could we use CBPG money for grants for this?
We can reach out to Terry about that. I know when we proposed doing this project with CBPG money, it was not one that was eligible. But there may be assistance on the homeowner's, it may not come from CBPG, it may become from the other programs that are more housing-related. But we can reach out to Terry, and as part of that process of having the meeting, notifying the residents, we can make sure that if there is a grant available, we'll get Terry's group involved, too.
Okay, that would be great.
Thank you, Member Nelson. Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes, you know, I look at this, and I don't think we should delay the grant agreement, but I really feel we're going to have to help the residents, because we're talking about bringing in a plumber. And as you said, the price could be upwards of $12,000 to $16,000, which the average person can ill afford to do. So, I want to say, "Let's approve the grant agreement." And then, on the other side, we're getting with the neighborhood to let them know exactly what's going on, and hopefully have some information on grants they can receive to offset some of the costs. to let them know exactly what's going on and hopefully have some information on grants they can receive to offset some of the cost.
Yeah.
Anything else, Member Nelson?
And I was gonna say, maybe, um, extending the amount of time they have to pay for it might help.
And like I said, that's in the code currently, that can be, that can be changed, it really to, to meeting process to, to make a change there.
Any further discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve, um, consent agenda item zero, oh, the Gibson.
Second.
Street septic to sewer.
Yeah, second and thank you, Member Moscoso for bringing that up.
I'm pretty sure you said member zero at first, right? Number zero? I get it, um, all right, so I have a motion and I have a second, any further discussion? All those in here say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously, thank you very much, City Manager.
Sir, we have, uh, no ordinance, the second reading, so move on to first reading. And the first, uh, 10A is the, um, fence permit ordinance. And we'll have the, conduct the first reading ordinance number 25-2025. And Attorney Titusville, Florida amending the Code of Ordinances to clarify requirements for the repair and replacement of permitted fences to be consistent with the Florida Building Code requirements by amending section 6-56, construction permit required, inspection approval prior to use or occupancy, and 34-346, non-conforming structures rebuild and repair, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, incorporation into the code, and an effective date.
Thank you, Attorney Stokes, City Clerk.
I have a card. Can I speak?
Yep.
Not too late, okay, thank you.
Okay, I don't know if this is really quite on the subject, but in front of my house is a lift pump with a fence around it. Well, it used to be a fence, but it fell down over a year ago and now children come and they play on, they come regularly and tend to this lift pump. And I tell them every time, this needs to be fixed, we can't have children playing on the lift pump, the fence has collapsed. Well, I mean, here you're talking about a fence permit ordinance and I have a fence that is on city property in front of my house that has collapsed with children playing on lift pump, I've talked to everybody I can know to talk about it, I've talked about it and it's been over a year now. So that's, it has to do with fence. On Maryland Avenue if at all possible, thank you very much.
Ms. Kay, what I would say is, uh, it was very loosely connected, but.
Very loosely connected.
Got that in there. What I would've probably, uh, done is said, uh, that the city was unable to obtain a fence permit for their own fence.
Yeah, something like that.
Mr. Cook? Can we get that fixed, please?
Yes, we'll make sure Phil Dobbs addresses that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, see, it's on city property. All right, City Manager?
Moving on to 10B is the, uh, small-scale amendment, application number 2-2025, 5320 South Washington Avenue. And that actually has three separate ordinances in the issue and Attorney Stokes will read those three ordinances. Okay, first one, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida amending the Code of Ordinances to clarify requirement, sorry about that. I'm one behind. An ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida amending section seven, chapter 63-2001, laws of Florida, special acts of 1963, by annexing certain property located at 5320 South Washington Avenue, having parcel ID number of 22-35-26-00-511 to be included within the city limits, providing for severability, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, and providing for an effective date. The second of the three will be an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida amending the Code of Ordinances by amending ordinance number 60-1988, which adopted the comprehensive plan of the city of Titusville by amending the future land use map by changing the land use designation on approximately 4.52 plus or minus acres of property located at 5320 South Washington Avenue, having Brevard County parcel ID number 22-35-26-00, Brevard County future land use designation to the commercial high-intensity city of Titusville future land use designation, providing for severability, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, and providing for an effective date. And the third is an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida amending ordinance number 5-1993 of the city of Titusville by amending the zoning map made a part of said ordinance by reference by changing the BU1 general retail commercial, Brevard County zoning district, to the community commercial CC zoning district on approximately 4.52 plus or minus acres of property located at 5320 South Washington Avenue, having Brevard County parcel ID number 22-35-26-00, providing for severability, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Attorney Stokes, City Clerk. All right, City Manager?
And finally, we have 10C, which is a rezoning, number 2-2025, Brooks Landing Dog Park. And Attorney Stokes will read the ordinance. An ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida amending ordinance number 24-2019, amending the master plan and conditions associated with the planned development PD zoning district on approximately 3.0034188, located approximately 1,500 feet east of US Highway 1 on the north side of JJ Road to include a dog park use, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Attorney Stokes, City Clerk. City Manager?
Moving on to 11, uh, old business, and it's the open space ordinance and Brad Parish has a presentation.
This ordinance, uh, was requested by council several years ago. It has turned into a much more complicated ordinance than we ever anticipated. Our previous attorney, Richard Broome, spent an enormous amount of time with me trying to make sure we did this right. We've made changes to our open space requirements mainly because of the response of, of the Brooks Landing project, actually, uh, which is a previous item here. So when that was first brought before city council, there was a, they went through a rezoning process to put a planned development zoning, a tailor-made zoning on the property, which if you're gonna use that tool requires a minimum of open space requirement. Well, one of the issues that the council had with, with that was the specific language in there, which I've got on this, on this PowerPoint slide here, and it states, recreation, example, picnic areas or walking trails, and active recreation, example, playgrounds or basketball courts, areas, private water bodies and stormwater retention or detention areas that are designed to be used for passive recreation, for example, improved with fountains, benches, and walkways may be counted towards the common open space minimum requirement. That's all it says for the PD zoning district, there's some other statements in there, but this is really the crux of it. This is the tool that the city staff has to use in order to negotiate what is supposed to be inside that open space requirement. This is the problem the city council had. So the task from council to negotiate what that open space should be when a developer decides to use one of the tools, such as a planned development rezoning with a master plan. We looked at it initially to see if there should be a, um, a quantifiable list of what all those amenities should be and found out that it'd be really impossible, no other jurisdiction was doing this. So, yeah, some of the, the new members of the council, this is the first time you're seeing this, the previous members who are on there, this is probably the fourth or fifth time you've seen this. Last time you saw this, especially the, the council members who've been on the council for the past few years, the, the main change you'll see, and I'll, um, is that we've consolidated all of the references of open space throughout the code into one location now. So it's a much bigger ordinance, but the big bulk of it is the fact that we've just consolidated all those references into one location for ease of use. We did expand the intent and purpose statement, we've added a new open space categories. So all the references to open space, recreation, parks, whatever that might be in combinations thereof, have been replaced with the word open space as the umbrella term, and then everything else falls underneath that. We've also added standards in there that are applicable to all the development types. For example, addressing one of the main issues the council had at the time was, um, utilizing all the stormwater facilities and counting it towards open space. There was some concern from council members about being able to do that. So we included into the ordinance. So these are definitions, descriptions, and standards of each of the develop, of open space types underneath that umbrella term, open space. You have parks, playgrounds, natural areas, green spaces, plazas, and so on. And it gives some criteria as what those are and what the dimensions should be. So basically, when a developer comes in with a new planned development rezoning, they'll have that minimum open space requirement, which is currently 35%, that has not changed. But what that is to identify what the particular open space they're gonna use, and so identify that on their plan. And so that gives this, this, uh, matrix you'll see in the ordinance gives us a lot more, uh, to use in that negotiation so that when it comes before the, the council, they're not having to negotiate with you. As I mentioned earlier about, uh, counting the natural water body areas or stormwater systems as toward the open space, uh, the standard has not changed. We've always initiated, uh, the standard of only utilizing 50% or half that towards your open space, that has not changed at all ever since the first draft of this ordinance. Parking areas do not count as open space, uh, buffers and landscape islands may count as open space. So we defined that of all the different development standards, so these are standards that are applied to any open space, uh, depending on which, uh, development type you wanna use. And what I mean by development type, you have planned development rezoning, you have the regional mixed-use zoning district, some of you may recall that. The urban village zoning district, that's Titus Landing, have not been used very often, and that is conservation subdivision design, cluster subdivision design, mobile home, park, things of that nature. So the new standards, open space should be usable common open space. Open space includes amenities, must choose from a list of categories. Again, going back to that matrix, the developer must identify what they're gonna include in that open space from that matrix. The level of service standard, we did an analysis of that, uh, several years ago, this is the same, uh, nation appraisal report back in 2018. And our current standard of open space and recreational amenities throughout the city right now, we have a level of service standard inside the comprehensive plan which says that for every acre, you must create eight acres for every 1,000 persons. We're way above that. So we're never gonna create new parks, but the development standards inside the code right now, which acquire an open space component for, um, a planned development rezoning with a master plan, like Brooks Landing, they have to create an open space for their development. And so the standards we've applied inside the code are specific to those development options that a developer may wanna use. That doesn't create new public park that we have to maintain to help meet our level of service standard. We did an analysis several years ago and some of the members who were on council before have seen this as well. The Trust for Public Land had a little cheat sheet you can use to kind of, or a tool online to determine, uh, whether you are, uh, your park distribution is equitable. We are not meeting their level of standard of what is equitable, so we create that with the standards we're putting into this open space ordinance. So a developer creates a new development using one of the tools that we have available, they'll have to create, uh, that new open space for that development and thereby creating some kind of park space, whatever it is for those residents. We initially thought we were gonna introduce this new level of service standard, we decided not to go with that. After working with legal staff, there were a lot of things that were gonna be problematic with this, this is something that we could probably, the city could consider uh, as a comprehensive plan amendment if they want to replace their parks level of service standard in the future. So we did not introduce this, this was in previous versions, we did not. Exemptions from this, residential subdivisions located a quarter mile of an existing park, infill residential development. And an example of that's on the image on the right side, so you have a piece of property that's surrounded by development. It has the infrastructure there, has the parks there, I'm sorry, the road there and the utilities available to connect to it, that's considered to be an infill development. So in those particular cases, we're not gonna require a, um, a minimum open space requirement if they use one of the tools available to us, such as a planned development rezoning. Redundant standards, we, uh, the, the matrix you see on the left side, that is currently in our code, we did not create this. This is standards that are available now and regular, these are regulations there now. So if you want to create a planned industrial development, this is a special zoning district, there's a minimum of a space requirement of 20%, that's right now. The same thing with the others you see there, planned development, there's a minimum 35% open space requirement. The difference with this ordinance is now we're applying a matrix of definition apply to all its development options. The thresholds have not changed. Cool, that'll try and answer any questions for you, we're basically asking you for permission to go forward with advertising this ordinance.
Thank you, Brad, for putting that together, as I look through the open space categories, uh, some things jumped out at me, uh, that might be missing, uh, for us to consider, like, I don't know, pickleball courts, basketball courts, because it looks like, and the definition of playground just kinda talks about playgrounds, unless I missed that.
That's correct, so the, the standards talk about the applicant has to utilize, identify insider open space. A minimum piece has to be active and a minimum piece has to be passive, and so they could choose which ones are they gonna be there. But at least some component has to be active and some component has to be passive. The active part is gonna be those areas where they have pickleball courts, we're gonna have stabilized surfaces for tennis courts, basketball, whatever that might be, that's gonna be active. And that's defined in the standards further up in this code.
What I'm saying is I'm looking at the list of open space categories, right, and it doesn't list those other features unless I'm missing it.
No, it doesn't, so we didn't wanna get that specific. So if they decide to use one of the active spaces that are in here, such as a playground, there's nothing that prohibits them from being able to utilize or incorporate some kind of recreational component, such as a tennis court or pickleball court into that.
So they have to do it along with whatever they're, and they can just do like, you know, 20 pickleball courts and not a playground?
Correct, we did not want, again, we didn't want to come up with a quantifiable list that if you have so many square feet of required open space, you must have so many pickleball courts or so many fountains or so many benches, that, we could not find examples of that anywhere in the, in the, of other codes. And we found that to be cumbersome and actually restrictive as far as being able to allow for a developer to be creative.
I get that, I was just, you know, as I think some of these planned developments maybe come about, I think you don't mind, but I did not know if we were maybe limiting ourselves to what type of outdoor amenities did we think about, all the possible options, so that was the reason for my question. Member Moscoso?
Sure, thank you, um, so right now with planned development, because I, I do think there are some, um, things coming down the pipeline. For planned development, it is 35% open space and then it would go down to 20%, but it would, no.
The threshold will stay the same.
So it's gonna say 35%, but it's gonna be more quality, so stormwater would, where previously stormwater counted in that 35, I mean, not stormwater, um, ponds counted in that open space, they will no longer count, is that correct?
So in the planned development zoning, what has been done in the past is the developer will utilize their stormwater system or a natural water body if it was on the property and just count that towards the open space by maybe putting in a bench next to it, a walkway around it, or just a fountain in the middle of it, and up to half of all of those water bodies.
Only half.
Correct.
And it's so, but it's still 35% open space for a planned development.
Correct.
So we're really getting just higher quality property that they're having to, or more usable property instead of ponds and things that people really might not be able to use.
It will help us in the negotiating, negotiating with them is making sure that there are some quality amenities as part of that.
Okay.
Usable common open space.
And I saw that there would be some projects that would be grandfathered in just because of where they are, are in the process, would you be able to give us a list? It doesn't have to be tonight, but if you have a list of those, um, projects, I'd just, I'd love to see those as well.
Yeah, we can do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Moscoso, Member Stokoe?
Yes, um, one of the things I was thinking about as I was going through this because I have seen this come up, um, the, I That I think the biggest thing that I feel like everyone, us and developers are wanting is for us to be very clear. That has been the biggest thing. And I think for those of us that've been on council, one of the big frustrations, a park bench. And it's like, thank you. Like, and so my, what I want to make sure is happening, and I, I think we're very close to that, is that we're very clear, so there's no ambiguity. And that we're, if I were a developer, I'd go for the cheapest option. And so I want to make sure that there's good incentive for them to do something that would be a quality amenity for the residents that will be living there. So that's one area. The other area I was thinking, the fifty and ninety-five project, and that was potentially going to be a live local or planned development. There was concern about the gray area regarding what the floor area ratio is. Can I even get the open space with how it's written? Is that cleaned up in this? Do you remember when I was having that discussion? I don't know if it is or not.
You're referring to the live local ordinance that the city adopted. That's a separate ordinance.
Okay.
It, what it did is we adopted the ordinance inquiry into that ordinance. And so it does a reference back to those standards. So if they now require they do a live local project, have to put in some kind of open space requirement, it'll refer back to this ordinance as far as asking developer, all right, pick and choose what you're going to put into that open space.
Okay.
So it's, right now, I think the live local law, the minimum based on the urban village zoning is twenty percent.
Okay.
Which is different from that floor area ratio that you're.
Okay, and I guess that's where I'm wondering, was the, I can't remember if the floor area ratio issue that was concerning open space or if it was concerning live local.
That floor area ratio question was related to the minimum percent of the building can be, has to be utilized for mixed use of a mixed use component.
Okay.
And so the, if they decide to do a multifamily development that has several floors, the square footage of all of that, including all the floors, twenty percent of that has to be counted toward, or some percentage has to be counted towards a minimum mixed use component.
In relation to the open space area or?
That's different. That's just the, that floor ratio you're talking about is just the building itself.
So there wasn't an issue with the open space then? It was just the floor area ratio that?
That, I recall when that ordinance was being drafted, that was the biggest issue.
Okay. Okay, I wanted to clarify that. Also clarifying, I think this primarily affects the PD zoning and then some of those other ones that you list. Impact, land use for open space recreation as well? Or is this just looking at those certain categories of PD that particular zoning?
Sorry, this is only amending the development options types. So if you look on page seven sixty-four of your packet.
Okay.
So the ordinance is, everything you see in black text, it's existing language. What is strike through and underline, that is either, strike through is being removed, or underline that is brand new language. So you see the thresholds there for each of those development types in that matrix are not changing. Those are the same. And in the case of the R M U, there's some of them just being carried over. They have not changed the thresholds.
Okay.
But this only applies to those listed development types you see on that table.
Okay. And I, I feel like what I see happening is that we're improving the quality. I just want to make sure that there's not something I'm missing. And then to, kind of what the mayor was saying in regard to where we're starting on seven seventy-one with the different categories, I'm thinking maybe instead of like playground, we did something labeled recreation. So it could be a playground or a pickleball court or something active if we're trying to make some, it more clear of what's going to be allowed.
I refer you to page seven sixty and seven sixty-one.
Okay.
Paragraphs, it looks like it's I, or one, Roman numeral one, two, three, and four.
Seven sixty.
So this, we struggled a lot with this part, too.
Okay.
So this is where the, a passive component include a, an active component. It kind of gives you a definition of what those are, gives you examples of what those are. So there's nothing that prohibits nature trails, lakes, bike ways, swimming pools, tennis courts, similar recreational amenities. But if they're going to incorporate those into a passive or active portion, it has to make sense. So if they're going to propose a natural matrix as, which is, and that's passive, you've loaded up with tennis courts, pickleball courts, we're not going to call that passive. Because that by definition is not a greenway as is defined. That is impacting the environmental area there. You're painting a lot of surface area.
Okay. Now, I see what you're saying. I want to get a sit on for a little bit, because I, I hear you on that. And I think we have to just think, is our intent to save all the green space or is our intent to have higher quality amenities? And I think that's what we need to think about. Questions? All right.
Thank you, Member Stokel. Member Nelson?
I had, I'm being, Brad, so, you know, bear with me. Page seven sixty-three A I. You're talking about such useful space shall include a minimum of one active and passive recreational area. Are you saying one active recreational area and one passive recreational area?
Right, so let's say you have twenty percent of open space requirement. That's your minimum, right? So if you decide to, you can't just make all of it passive. There has to be something that you can choose out of that matrix that you're going to call out on your plan that is obviously active.
Okay, the pickiness in me would say shall include a minimum of one active and one passive recreational area.
What you're on line, can you tell me which line you're on, on page seven sixty?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four, okay.
Thirty-three and thirty-four.
We can change that.
So I, I would suggest change. You know, that's what we do. That's what we do. The other question I had was if you go to the next page, D I, one, two, and three, you're talking about fifty percent of the natural water body and stormwater system qualify as open space area. And fifty percent or more of the active and usable area shall be above the elevation. I think I'm getting it. So I have this area. Fifty percent is above the, the appropriate elevation, above the hundred twenty-five year stormwater event. So of that, I can only count fifty percent?
That paragraph two, the Roman numeral two, fifty percent and that twenty-five year, that's a, that's a, a stormwater design standard.
Okay, explain further.
So when you, and this is where Kevin has to help me. But when you're designing a stormwater system, there's a develop, there's a standard, level of service standard you have to meet.
Okay.
So the minimum is that standard you see referenced in, in paragraph two, Roman numeral two there. So what that's basically saying is, again, it's reiterating what, what paragraph one is saying. You can't use more than fifty percent of your stormwater system or ponds towards your open space.
Okay, the way I'm reading it is that my, I look at how much of the active and usable area is above the elevation.
Yeah.
And say, it's half an acre. Make it one acre, one acre is about that. And then I go to paragraph one, and the way I'm reading it is I can only use fifty percent of that number. Am I right?
What's below that, that elevation is probably going to be stormwater. What's above it is what's going to be usable. So it's trying to keep, trying to keep you from using all of your stormwater system or even natural water bodies towards open space. It's saying you can only use half of what's, what's below that elevation towards that.
I think it's confusing.
Okay. This is something we worked with, with our city engineer, like, to make sure. And this is something we also found from other codes, but we can reevaluate it again just to make sure.
Coming from a family of engineers, they're a little confusing. They didn't hear that. Well, they say I'm confusing, so. Highway and.
I'm sorry, what was the question again? Highway, industrial?
Infill.
Infill.
That was all the question was.
That was the end of the question. I'm making it confusing. In here.
Are you, are you referring to the matrix back on the previous page?
Right. And it talks about zero open space.
I'm sorry, you're on page, you're looking at page seven sixty-four, correct? This is the development types? Or are you looking at the standards that are further down? Because currently, there is not a minimum of open space inside the highway, industrial, infill, M three zoning district.
So I was curious, why?
This is a good question. When you look at, this zoning district was created, it does require some open space component as part of the design. It doesn't give very good standards on that. So if you look on, further down in the ordinance, paragraph D, section thirty dash one sixty-three D, so I'll go down to that.
Okay.
Which is on page seven sixty-five. So each of those development standards after that matrix, then you have the standard and some additional standards that are specifically related to that particular development type. So M three, for example.
So it's talking about useful open spaces should be designed as integral, integral parts of the site and buildings assigned.
There, M three, paragraph one and two. Two says green belt properties. And this says a green belt of thirty-five feet along the front stepback or abutting the highway. So then that's also defined in the, I believe in the matrix, what that might be. So it already telling you what type of open space you have to have as part of your development. And these, these particular zoning districts are rarely used. In fact, they're only along South Street between fifty and Fox Lake. There are only a few properties that have this.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions from council? Discussion? Did I already call the cards on this one? Okay.
I gave a card. I didn't give you a card?
Open space?
Can I give you one afterward?
It's up to council if they'll hear after the thing. Member Nelson?
I would be okay with it.
All right. Is there a second? Everybody, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Sorry, just, you're good. I just have to follow procedure. Appreciate you.
Yes. Okay, sorry, thank you. And I'm sorry, I forgot. I've did a lot of work on this proposed ordinance and deserves praise for all the thoughtful work. I find the subject is way above my pay grade, okay? I like the pictures, though. The pictures are great. So I want to bring a little levity and, and to give them some praise. So I did work with another advocate who was studying it as well, she couldn't come tonight. But together, we, we just want to say that we, we think the staff did a really good job and, and that it should be adopted. It's, it's a good improvement. I think it'll provide a lot of clarity to the developers of these different types of developments that are required to have open space. Then there's the L I D aspect of it as well, and so that benefits the lagoon. So I just wanted to put in my two cents worth. Yes, please adopt it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Kev. Council can have a motion. It's a visability, so. See, manager?
Waiting for council to make a motion if they want to approve the visability.
Yeah. Tell my, I, member Nelson?
Move to approve the visability on the open space ordinance.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any further discussion from council? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. See, manager?
So moving on to eleven B, the outsourcing registry of foreclosed and vacant properties. And we're asking city council to review the selection committee's rankings and provide direction on whether to outsource the registry and vacant properties with the number one firm, or to continue managing the process in-house through code enforcement division. And we have Glenn Tolleson, who is going to be the advocate for managing it in-house.
Hey, Glenn.
Yes, good evening, everyone. The bid did go out, three firms did apply. They were reviewed by a three-person panel with which I was one of those people. Came back that Munirag came in number one. And if the council wishes to go out to a third party, the recommendation would be to award contract to them or to stay in-house. And again, I am a proponent for keeping it in-house. We took it over in two thousand twenty-three when Pro Champs crashed. And currently, we have a hundred and thirty registered, got five more today. We scraped the same data pretty much. We use Realty Track, AIDM platform data, the clerk's office. We, we may not get them all, but the big thing that should be told is that we are proactive, we know where these properties are. And most, ninety percent of all of our properties are occupied, which the vacant registry doesn't really do anything for that. I mean, we know where they're at, but if they're occupied, their property management companies don't do anything to an occupied property. Comes back to us. So we do it anyway. And, but with that, all three companies were very good. They're very good at what they do. But it is their business. Again, we do a really good job. And actually, within the city, we get more lien requests, probably ten a day on property moving within the city. So we spend a lot of time doing that. And like I said, we're up to, there's currently around twenty-five thousand, two hundred and seventy residences within both the zip codes here. And out of that, according to Realty Track, into them, we're currently at one twenty-six, not counting the five that came in today. Again, they probably have more data, because that's what they do, and they have better software than we do. But again, I'm an advocate of, I like to keep stuff in-house and keep those funds coming to our citizens. With that, I'll be happy to answer any other questions.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes, Glenn. I definitely agree to keep it in-house, especially when I saw that the contractor is taking, we're only getting like, and that sixty-five percent that we're losing, that you already garnered from it. I think that even if it took an additional person in our office, we could still, we would be ahead of the game. Now, my question to you is, are you, do you, you don't feel that you have too many to manage? I mean, if, I'm kind of a person, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. So are you able to manage what you have with the people that you have?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Member Stokel?
Yes. My biggest thing, and I've told you this, is what's the most cost-effective thing for us to do? And how can we better clean up blight as well? So that's kind of where my head is at. So my question is, okay, so we have a hundred and thirty registered currently, and how much do they pay? What's our fee?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And then we, not to cut you off, but with that, we have to keep track of that so to make sure that we send the renewals out ahead of time.
Okay. And then, so we have a hundred and thirty right now. How many vacant properties do we have that aren't registered?
That, I, I don't know, because I have to work off the data we have. And that's according to Realty Track and AIDM data and platform and the clerk's office. And we do scrub them twice or every two weeks.
Okay. And I think that's where I am wondering, do we, do we have a barrier that we may need to purchase something if we don't have that software to be able to know? Because that, I can't answer the question if it's cost-effective. I can tell you that we have a hundred and thirty at one fifty each annually, but I don't know, I can't tell you how much we're losing annually as well. So that makes it difficult for me to make a decision regarding this. And then my other question I had was, I noticed that all three people that were on the committee ranked the different companies differently. Could you explain why that is?
I have no idea what.
Do you know what they were ranked on or what? Because I don't, we don't have any score sheets or anything in here to show.
The score sheet should have been in the packet.
They're not in here. It just says how they ranked them, but I don't know what, like, why did the, it makes me wonder, why did the finance person rank some other company?
Actually, the finance person.
And you knew all three ranked a different person?
Right. I'm not really sure that the finance person, other than the finance side of it, knew what the vacant registry actually was.
Which again, makes it difficult for me to.
He, his was based on purely on the applicant's presentations, I'm sure.
Okay.
Some were, and I have to admit, to me, they were all three the same. I've seen them, used them for ten years when they were Pro Champs. So I didn't have a lot of questions. And I basically went down to what they were offering the city. Two of them were a hun- hundred dollars and one was one twenty-five.
Okay. Okay.
Member Nelson?
When we started this, we did it because we had so many vacant buildings. And the banks were not taking care of the property. And it was our way of making sure that we had somebody who was responsible, accountable to us. And I think we've gotten past that. So to me, I would rather turn around and leave it with our officials because you guys are out there looking at the property. And if it's overgrown, if it's not being taken care of, you're there monitoring the situation. So I think we're at the point where we can handle it in-house. Whereas when COVID sprang up, we couldn't do it. And I think we had some, something like five hundred properties that were owned by banks.
Yes, ma'am.
And it was overgrown, broken windows, broken doors, you know, just problems. So for me, right now, I would rather turn around and turn it back over to code enforcement.
Thank you, Member Nelson. Member Moscoso?
Thank you. I'm not sure who wrote this document, but I think the analysis really shows the heart of our code enforcement. And I just want to read a little piece of it. And it says, in-house management provides irreplaceable benefits in governance, quality, community relation, relationships, and policy flexibility. The ability to directly align enforcement with community development goals, exercise discretion in hardship cases, and maintain transparent accountability to residents represents significant value that extends beyond simple operational metrics. And I think that is something our code enforcement does well, and that's why it's also paired up with our TPD. Because they're not just out there writing violations. And I feel very confident with code enforcement keeping this because we have Glenn at the head and even some of our residents who perhaps don't like anything we do. They can all agree that they're very thankful for you and the job you're doing. So we lean more towards that. Because the easy thing for you to say would be, we don't want the extra work. Let's outsource it. But not only are you saving us money, you're really working on those relationships within our community. For that, I want to thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Moscoso. And just to clarify for all those folks that, you know, weren't here when council initially asked their RFP to go out, probably back in January now.
It was the first meeting in January, so.
Yeah. And staff didn't put, put it out until after we had a city manager change. So that was, what, four months later? You know, this is really going after the people that are foreclosing on people's homes in Titusville. I'm not talking about charging the residents of Titusville, but banks that are foreclosing on people in Titusville. And every city has a mechanism for tracking that and making sure that those banks are in compliance with all the accountable regulation. And, you know, quite honestly, we probably should charge them more. They're foreclosing on our residents, in my opinion. But at the end of the day, we want to make sure we're efficient and effective with our time. And code enforcement does a lot. That is absolutely true. And if we have an opportunity to provide them with an effective tool to be more efficient and collect potentially more revenue, because from the data that I've seen, we're only collecting on about sixty percent of all available foreclosure fees. And I don't know how in-house we're tracking the renewals, but that's kind of an important question to ask because an average foreclosure lasts about three years. So while we charge them a hundred and fifty the first year, they have to pay a hundred and fifty the second year.
That's correct.
And the third year. So what is our mechanism if we currently have a hundred and thirty registered? And let's say in the last twenty-four months, we've had two hundred and sixty-four foreclosures, off the top of my head, that I know that answer to. What are we doing to be making sure that we're collecting all these?
Again, we, we go with the data that we have available to us. And again, I don't know what, what data that you got, but I go from what we're able to obtain, which is clerk's office and Realty Track, which we don't have a subscription to, so it may be outdated. And again, it's, it's, it may be sixty percent that we miss. But we are on the street every day. And, and we do that. And again, we do, as soon as attorney of record. And again, for us, let's say that you do go third, third party. If someone does not register, they have to send it back to us to take back in front of the magistrate. If something's going on, if it's occupied dwelling, they can't do anything. It comes back to us. We're already doing it. So is the forty percent that we're missing the better benefit? I don't know. It's up for you, y'all to decide.
And I appreciate that, Glenn. And I know we've had some healthy dialogue about this. One of the items where we really reinforced to making sure this RFP got out is because we had a gentleman come before us asking us to vacate his fine that he got from our magistrate because the letters weren't getting to him. Because they were going to a previous property owner. And so again, if we're pulling data from the wrong place and don't have a subscription to the latest and greatest software that actually scrubs information from all the applicable places and outsourcing it to a firm that has that data. And then at the end of the day, if there is an issue, it goes right back to code enforcement to, like you said, but the data is there. That's basically what we're paying for. Is the data that we don't really have currently. So again, my recommendation would be very simply is to look at getting a good vendor that can supply us a healthy amount of data. I would also advise council to take a look at our foreclosure fee amount. Because again, that hundred and fifty dollars is probably written into the code. When do you think town that was written into the code?
No, no, sir. That was set by council in two thousand twenty-three.
Twenty, the hundred and fifty dollar amount?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it's not that old, but sometimes you look at things and go, okay, costs have gone up. But at the end of the day, you know, we're talking about charging banks on, in New York and other areas, not, not our residents. So again, that's just my two cents. Member Stokel?
Yeah, I just want to clarify because I feel like this is turning into, we don't like code enforcement, clean forces, not doing a good job. And that's completely not what this is. I rave about your department all the time. This is strictly, and they will still be boots on the ground, going to properties, helping the residents. This is strictly for vacant properties. And the way I'm looking at this is they don't have, you don't have the software. We're missing out and you're limited by what software you do have. And so for me, especially when I go to the conferences and I'm seeing other municipalities doing things proactively to clean up their cities, to collect more revenue so they can lower tax. When I heard about this, when I saw that this was an option, and I've been talking about this since we've had Pro Champs trying to get something done with this to give us better tools. And I, that's where I come from. If I'm in my job and I know I'm limited in my job because I don't have the appropriate software, I can't do certain things. I, I would just like us to get there. And it's not that our department's not doing well. I just want to see us be elevated and be more proactive if we have access to different tools to help us. That is where I'm coming from. So part of me, and the big thing that I feel like I don't have information on that's clear is what are we missing out on? Because you're saying sixty percent that we're missing out on, we don't know because we're limited with the data. So part of me is thinking maybe we table this to the next meeting and try to get accurate information so we can make an informed decision. That's kind of where I'm leaning towards. Just because I, I would like to know that number of, what are we missing out on? And what could this potential new software company provide for us in addition to what code enforcement's doing, not taking away from what they're doing?
A hundred percent. This is done strictly to help support and elevate and provide the right software. Because like I said, at the end of the day, you know, we saw that come up firsthand in a real-life situation. Vice Mayor Cole?
You mentioned something about us not having a subscription to a registry that you need. And I guess my question is, why?
Right now, we're actually going through another transition of software. And this really hasn't been at the forefront for us because we've been on top of it the best we could. It is something that, that we, we could look at adding software. Like I said, right now, we're in transition from citizen serve back to clarity.
So would that registration helped you capture more of the places and the houses in the community that are under foreclosure?
Well, when, we use Pro Champs and that was two thousand and fourteen, when I came on with the city. And they were using it at that time. And the city had just suffered from two thousand nine to then, massive layoffs, housing went down. And there, there were, there were a lot of vacant registries being registered. Again, though, not a lot of them were vacant. And that's the case today. I'd say ninety percent of them are occupied. It does give you someone to contact. And the first thing they ask us is, is it occupied? Yes. And, okay.
Okay. I, I tend to agree with Members Stokel that if we had a cost analysis of X number of properties versus the thirty-five percent that we're going to get from the contractor versus you doing it and we get a hundred percent of it and we give you the correct software to track it. And I think if we had additional information or some form of cost analysis, it would assist us in making the decision better. I mean, I really wanted to stay in-house, but it may be smarter to go out-house. So whatever. Okay?
Are you, are you finished?
Oh, yes.
Member Moscoso?
Sure. And this, this question is for Mr. Stokes. So what role would our new city attorney have in this if we kept it in-house?
The, the probably very minimal role. I mean, the attorney would review the, the documents, the registration forms and everything, just to make sure staff is set up right. And, but if there are some demand letters, if somebody is not participating, legal could have some demand letters that would go out and things like that. But beyond that, I don't think the attorney would play a.
I'm only asking Mr. Severs, who was our, one of our previous attorneys. He said that that would be a good question to ask a new attorney coming in, if they've had, you know, if they've handled any collection cases, code enforcement, things like that. So I was just curious how this would play.
No, I would agree with him. That, that is, you know, code enforcement in general is, is something that the attorney generally very involved in, both with the Reddick Griller code enforcement hearings. And then also, as far as enforceability, what the council needs to decide as a policy consideration is if properties aren't registering as required, how aggressive does the city want to get? Do we really want to go after them and have some, some, you know, hammer in there that, that can penalize them for it or not? I mean, that, it is true, the banks generally, they have such a large volume of homes in foreclosure at any given time. They don't pay a lot of attention. You have to get their attention, you know. And so that sometimes takes effort.
Okay, thank you. So I, I mean, I'm in favor of keeping it in-house, but I'm also okay if we want to table it and get more information moving forward.
Thank you, Members, Member Moscoso. Member Stokel?
Yep. Just to clarify for Member Moscoso, back when we had Pro Champs, I think part of the issues with them and how they kind of went away essentially. They didn't have lawyers, I think, helping to enforce it. And then when I had talked to our legal staff, they just didn't have capacity to go after that many. And so then, so what, I think, I don't know if all of them do, but I know some of them have attorneys on staff. So they are able to do, as Mr. Stokes said, kind of go after them a little bit more aggressively than I think we can at the moment.
If I may add something, one thing that is a great tool, that's probably not used by enough cities often enough, is if these properties are in foreclosure, if they're owned by the bank at the time, if you make violation of this a code violation and you get a code case through and it goes to a lien on the law, when you have a lien on one property, you have the lien on every property they own. Now all of a sudden, banks are looking at, you know, this, this lien in Titusville is potentially creating a cloud on every piece of property we own in the state. That gets their attention, so.
Thank you, Attorney Stokes. Member Nelson?
I would be interested, excuse me, in seeing what kind of software we could buy, what the cost would be. In terms of a hundred and fifty dollars per property, the hundred and fifty, hundred and thirty pieces of property, I mean, that's netting us nineteen thousand dollars. So it's, we're not talking huge amounts. So I'm not sure if it's really worth going to an outside person. But I would like to know how much that software would be.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we table.
We do have a card. It's CJ Johnson. He's with the Hira Property Registry.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is CJ Johnson. I'm a Pervara County resident, live down in Melbourne. One of the vendors that applied for the bid for, for the RFP. I've noticed that everyone that's come up here tonight is really focused on what they really care about, and that is making Titusville better. And what our company does and what we focus on is, in, in the two hundred cities that we work with nationally, is focusing on what makes them better and helping them with, with the best possible data. We've talked a lot about the data source, the source that we use, that is the same source that Glenn here was, was referring to. From a cost analysis, it probably doesn't make sense for an individual city to subscribe to something like that. Because we aggregate it with all of our subscriptions with, with all of our clients, it, it makes fiscal sense. One thing I did want to point out, the bid that we submitted is not accurate. And it was not accurately portrayed in the bid response by the, by the board that graded it. I confirmed that multiple times with city staff and on the official form by, in the RFP. So we submitted that form and confirmed that that was correct. So in the individual grading sheets, which I, I did a public request and received this morning, it does not look like that was accurately reflected, given the scoring. I wanted to make that, you know, clear tonight because I, you know, from everything that I'm hearing with the city of Titusville, transparency is very important. And I wanted to give the councils the, the most accurate and best possible information to make a decision. Something that we could help provide if necessary is, is data at no cost, so you can make a decision whether you want to go in-house or not, whether it's us or another vendor. Entirely up to the council. But as a company, what we really strive to do is give the cities the best information to make the best decisions for their residents. And we believe we're doing that with over two hundred cities that we're working with nationally, many within the state of Florida, including City of Jacksonville, City of Miami, Hillsborough County, City of Palm Bay. So given the incorrect form that was not, or the form that we submitted was not accurately portrayed in the grading.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Cole?
See, that's, it even adds more credence to the fact that I think we should table it. Because I was talking about buying software and I thought it was going to be twenty thousand dollars. There's no, no damn way I would have thought it would have been a hundred thousand dollars. So that's, that we table this and get more information, get software cost and all these kinds of things. And, and the percentage that we think that if we gave it to a firm to do it, what percentage increase would we have over the percentage that? what percentage increase would we have over the percentage that we do now?
I'll second.
All right, so I have a motion and I have a second. Any further discussion from council?
Yeah, I was just, we table it to August twelfth. Give us some time.
I I accept that. Yes, okay.
Okay, and then I am going to piggyback off the amendments. And would your motion include getting data from an outside source? Because as Glenn, he doesn't have the data to, he's working on the data that he has, right? So are you going to make that specific request of that gentleman right there or just anybody?
Wow.
Vice, or Member Stokel.
I don't want to put, would you be able to send us information as council?
I'm happy to provide it.
Okay.
Okay, I I guess I'm a little bit confused as to how the misinformation came. If you said seventy-five dollars and I.
Yeah, I think that's a question for our RFP and Purchasing Department, and we can ask those questions later.
All right.
All right, so I have a motion to table it to August twelfth, if I'm not mistaken. Right, and the second stands, and they're going to provide us the data to hopefully make an educated decision. Any further discussion? Absolutely. Thank you very much. Thank you, Glenn. Appreciate you. I was wondering what this gentleman was doing here. Now I understand. He's here to talk about Public Works.
We are on twelve A.
Yep, it's all of you guys.
Great presentation, Public Works. Kevin can introduce the our consultant and go over the proposed rates for FY twenty-six.
If we could get the presentation. All right, there's, as Tom mentioned, this is the, we give a brief objective overview for the night before I turn it over to our to our consultant here. So you're going to see the water sewer preliminary rates, solid waste preliminary rates, and we'll be asking to set the maximum rate increase for the stormwater assessment because we do have a billing notice that has to go out for the special assessment. So the only item being set tonight is the maximum rate that will be published on the letters going out to the residents for stormwater. I would say that water sewer can also be considered maximum because we'll be doing a billing notice that if you go with the rates we have tonight as a maximum, we'll be pushing that out to our bills because we do have to notice all residents of a proposed rate increase on water sewer through our billing system, and that takes us about a month to cycle the entire city. And you'll see water sewer and solid waste come back during the budget process. The stormwater assessment will be at a public hearing on August twenty-sixth of this year. For Peter with StanTech.
Okay, good evening, Mayor, Council members. My name is Peter Napoli. I work with StanTech Consulting. We're based in Tampa, Florida, and we help cities, counties around the state of Florida with all things rates, fees, funding, financial forecasting. So it's been a pleasure to work with the City of Titusville for the first time this year and the preliminary results for two of the funds and then our proposed results for the stormwater fund. So this presentation will review the revenue sufficiency analyses. That's what we call the study that we perform for the city. And the presentation will review all the components of that and the the results of that study. So a little agenda, I'll start out by, and then we'll go through the three separate enterprise funds and the three separate analyses that we performed for the city, water and sewer, solid waste, and then stormwater, and then we'll summarize the recommendations at the end. So to talk a little bit about our process, essentially, the revenue sufficiency analysis supports the city's annual budget process. So annually, it's the city's task to figure out what rates are necessary to support the operations, capital funding, debt funding, and transfers for each of the enterprise funds. The enterprise funds run like a business, so the charges for services should reflect the the cost of that service. So that's part of what we're doing is we're we're evaluating the current rates. We're looking at what kind of revenue needs to be generated by those rates in order to cover all the obligations and ensure that the funds are sustainable over a long-term period. So we use our financial forecasting models, which are a ten-year outlook. So it's a pretty long timeline for these funds, but it's necessary because of the capital funding and infrastructure needs, especially on the water and sewer side and that capital improvement program and to ensure that there's sufficient funding throughout that ten-year period. The value of this process is to identify the short-term and long-term impacts of your current decisions. So the decisions that you face today in this upcoming budget year in regards to rates have long-term impacts on the funding sustainability of the water and sewer, solid waste and stormwater funds. And it's hard to see that without a long-term forecasting model because budget works on an annual basis. You really only think about the upcoming year. So having that long-term forecasting model assists the city with that vision. And then finally, the source data and key assumptions. So we use the data from the city and we work with the finance team and in the Public Works team to acquire the data that we need. We have your current year, twenty twenty-five adjusted budget, revenues and expenses for all those three separate enterprise funds, your proposed budget for this upcoming budget year, your capital improvement program over a ten-year period, and the the buildings and infrastructure and and different types of assets that are necessary over that ten-year period have been identified by the city. And then we also forecast and use forecasting assumptions for the budget to forecast the operating expenses, benefits, repair and maintenance, operating costs, et cetera. So one more slide here just to review the financial management plan. A successful financial management plan is is what we're helping the city with with these three enterprise funds. And at the end of the day, that addresses three main components, cash flow needs, so ensuring that you have enough cash in the reserve balances to pay, keep the lights on, pay the employees, and 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 cover all the obligations. Operating reserves, so in case of any emergencies or unforeseen circumstances, you have to have a savings account. It helps with debt rating. It helps with liquidity purposes. And then thirdly, debt service coverage goes towards a rating. You have to have a certain amount of revenues to cover your ongoing debt obligations. So the principal and interest that's owed each year for outstanding debt. So with that, we'll get into the water and sewer analysis first. And as Mr. Cook was explaining, this can kind of be looked at from a more preliminary level at this point. The one rate that you have to look at this tonight, I believe, is the the stormwater rate. But just to summarize where we're at currently with the water and sewer analysis, the objective, the primary objective is to evaluate the sufficiency of those water and sewer rates that all the customers in the in the city pay. The observations, this just kind of summarizes where the fund is currently based on the twenty twenty-five budget. And so I might, I know it might be hard to see from where you're sitting, but the twenty twenty-five revenue, and this is, majority of it is that rate revenue from water and sewer rates. There are some other operating revenues, is about twenty-nine million dollars annually in the current year. So that's the amount that's going to be affected by any kind of percentage increase. It'll mostly increase, if if there's a ten percent rate increase, that amount increases. The twenty twenty-five operating expenses, so this is the personnel, the benefits, the repair and maintenance, all of those budgeted annually reoccurring operating expenses are about twenty-two million currently. There's transfers, so the utility fund has certain transfers to the general fund for administrative overhead and some other things. Those total five point two million. And then there is debt service this year of five point five million, which is unusually large because there's a big payment of a twenty twenty water and sewer bond that's going to expire after this year. It's the final payment, and that's about three point six million of that amount. So when you add all that up, you can see that just in this current year, there's a net income, really a net deficit of about four point eight million. So when you experience that, you use reserve fund balances to cover that that gap. And then finally, the average annual CIP spending is about twenty-one million dollars based on that plan that we were given. So that's about two hundred and ten million dollars over a ten-year timeframe, beginning next year and going all the way out to twenty thirty-five. And finally, some of the rate drivers to consider here is a minimum reserve balance and debt service coverage. So this next slide here is a whole lot to look at. It's really hard to see on that screen. I'll try to walk you through it all so you understand what's going on here. And then in the future, I will try to consolidate this a little bit.
Can I just stop you real quick?
Yes, sir.
City manager, we didn't, most of everybody else, yeah, we didn't get it in our package. So normally, we're able to kind of view it on our screen. So can you make sure that we all get that, please? Can you make sure we get this presentation, please?
Well, I actually did. I requested it because I noticed it wasn't, I was quite, I actually was, I was quite concerned that we were voting on percentages, and we had never even seen this presentation. So for me, that was a concern. So I've had, I had time to go through it. I got it, I I requested it over the weekend, and I think I got it Saturday, maybe? I'm not sure the exact date, but I I had the presentation in advance. But that was quite, a a big concern is we're voting on stuff. And I mean, how are you supposed to figure this out right now in this meeting?
Member Nelson.
Let's go say, I've got it, Meg got it. Herman.
No, when I had my briefing, I guess I don't think they had it, kind of like my briefing on Wednesday, I think, or Thursday.
I mean, is there a way we can turn around, Lee, share so that?
I can definitely follow along, but I just wanted to.
It would be nice if somebody could email it to us.
That was my omission. I should have emailed. See, I did get it a couple of days ago, and I should have gotten it to you.
Can you shoot it over to us right now? Kevin, can you?
Yeah, yeah, I can. We'll mail it to you right now.
Continue with your presentation.
Okay, all right, I I'll try to go through it in depth and vocalize everything that's going on here because I understand it's hard for you guys to see line by line. And and it's your first time seeing it too, after, you know, several years of working with clients. They get used to what they're seeing here. But what this is, we call it the dashboard or the control panel from our financial model. It has the important graphs, and it just summarizes the results of the ten-year projection period. At the top, and you can't really read it from where you're at, but at the top are the rate increases that are input into the plan. So it's ten years of rate increases that we have as a scenario for for the council's consideration. You're only considering one year at a time. This just kind of gives you a look as to see if you, if you went through with a certain plan, how would that affect your financial sustainability over a period of time? So what we have input into the model currently is five percent increases over the ten-year period. The city most recently went through a five percent increase to the water and sewer rates. So this is a continuation of that rate plan. It is a, that that's shown at the top of the screen. So in the middle of the screen is what we call the CIP execution. So that plan, that CIP plan that I was referring to earlier, that was two hundred and ten million dollars over a ten-year period. In reality, cities usually execute that at a lower level. It's difficult to fully execute those capital plans just having the manpower alone to to have the crews out there and and address all the needs. So there is that part of the reality, and then the other part of the reality is the funding and and financial funding ability to to cover that plan. So for this current scenario of maintaining those five percent increases, we've we've identified that the CIP can be funded at about seventy percent of that hundred percent capital plan. So what that gets you is about a hundred and forty-seven million of the two hundred and ten million projects that are identified. Then the graphs in the bottom half of the screen summarize. On the left-hand side, the top-left graph is your fund balance. So it's your savings account for the utility, for the water and sewer utility fund. The blue bar is how much money is left over in that account in each year. There's a black line going across. That represents the minimum reserve target. You wouldn't want your fund balance falling below that line because then you'd be in, you would be ignoring that target, and it wouldn't be a good situation financially. The the reserve balance that's been carried forward, and then we have that being spent down very quickly on capital projects upfront. So in the bottom-middle graph, you could see that there's different colors in that graph. That's the CIP funding. So if there's a green, that's cash. You can fund capital projects with cash, or you could fund it with debt or grants. That graph there summarizes the funding that's worked into the plan, and we have that cash balance in the account being spent down very quickly and then debt being used to fund the remainder of the capital projects. So what this is telling us is that with a five percent plan, your capital projects, but the vast majority of that funding would need to come from debt because the 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 cash flow dynamics of the utility model currently are not providing a whole lot of extra cash after your revenues pay for your operating expenses. It's not providing a whole lot of extra cash to cash fund capital. So a lot of cities and utilities would make it their goal to, they call it pay-go funding or pay-as-you-go fund. That is often very necessary for utility capital projects because they're very expensive and they also benefit the community over a long period of time. So it makes sense to spread that cost over a long period of time. So debt is often a useful instrument for funding capital projects. This current scenario, under five percent increases, you'd have to fund a hundred and thirty-two million dollars of those projects with debt. So the vast majority of the projects that are in that plan need to be debt-funded. We are, it's in the middle in that light blue bar. You don't want your debt service coverage going below a one point five threshold. So this actually shows that with your current revenues, you have sufficient coverage to take out all that debt to fund these projects. So you're not threatening your your coverage ratios and threatening your bond rating if you take out that debt. But yeah, this is just one potential scenario. We like to cooperate with the city and staff to generate as many scenarios as you want to see. Higher rate increases would mean less debt, more cash funding. Lower rate increases would mean more debt funding or more deferred capital. And it so it becomes a level of service discussion. And this is just our first scenario that we wanted to show the council. It's preliminary at this stage in the game, and we'd be happy to generate more in the future for the the city's review. But with that, I'll go to the next.
Can I ask a question before we go to the next section? And it might be more for staff. I think with our enterprise funds with water, some of it we transfer over into general fund, though. So can you just explain, if we have a quote-unquote excess to transfer over to the general fund, why can't it stay in the enterprise fund to help bring down what we're borrowing in debt? Okay, I don't know if anybody's here to answer that, but that that is something I would, and I know we don't have to make the decision on this now, but I would like to know that when we do go set the rates during budget time.
So there's two primary transfers to general fund. One is a general fund admin fee, which is paying a distributed cost of the administration of the city that the utility pays.
Water department. That makes sense.
We get a a rate of return on the utility itself. So some communities, that's a payment in lieu of taxes. Some communities do it different ways. You know, it's a, it's coming out of the cash funding balance of the fund. So it's not quote-unquote generated by the rates, but it does come out of the reserves. But it is a value, I believe, it's seven percent of the prior year revenues calculated annually by the finance department.
Okay, and then it is possible that, so when we're seeing projections of potentially going in debt a hundred and thirty-two million, that we could potentially get grants or apply. that we could potentially get grants or apply.
Apply for grants during this.
Okay, but that would be worst-case scenario?
Yeah, now, the, you know, the good thing about debt is we're spreading that cost over 15 years. So these projects are very long, large projects. So if you were to pay them in cash, you know, for instance, any reinforcement project was nearly $10 million. If that was cash-funded as opposed to a 15-, 20-year loan, those rate payers pay a 25% increase in year one. So the good thing is, we just retired a very large debt coverage. As Peter mentioned, our debt service coverage next year is 11. Means we have 11 times the revenue left over to pay our debt.
Okay.
And we kept that up throughout the system. But yes, these are rate projections, and because we can't count on grants in the future, we did limit our future revenues into debt, operating reserves, and the impact fees for about a limited period, assuming that the growth will tail off the end of this period.
Okay. And then my last question, some that are new won't. And this is not fair to ask because you're new this year. But when I first got on, you know, a little over eight years ago, we had a different person here giving us projections, and it was, oh, you'll increase 3% this year, but then next year, we'll go down to 2%, and you'll have a 1%. And it's like, okay, you're selling us. Okay, we'll do it now. And then next year, consultant would come in, and they'd say, oh, same thing. And so we never have gone down that I can recall. And so I see that this one's, this one's relatively, I could understand 5%. It's not a huge increase. I understand costs are going up. I am getting nervous as I looked at the other increases that I'm having some trust issues believing that they will taper down. So I don't know if you can speak to that as we go through. After going on my ninth year and seeing these year after year with hopes that they would go down, something always seems to come up. We had COVID, or this happened, and it's hard for me. I can understand the 5%, but when we're talking about the other two having a jump that high, I don't know if you've looked at the history of the other proposals that we received. It does make me a little bit nervous looking at those numbers. And I don't know, I see the jump. I think it's 18 and 1/2%. I don't know how much we raised stormwater. Stormwater, I understand, it's a lower cost, so it won't be that significant, but it's still a high percentage number. And then seeing the 8% going into solid waste, if you, when you get to that portion, try to make me feel better. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Members Stokel. And, you know, the print's a dollar tomorrow, and that coster will always continue to rise. But the question is, how do we plan for the future going forward? And I know we interrupted this nice gentleman's presentation. But my question is, as you look at, you know, $210 million in capital needs and a big chunk coming in 2028, what do you anticipate those specific projects to be?
I'd have to defer to.
Yeah, so we do have, you know, give an instance, by 2030, we no longer have the use of surface water at the Blue Heron for discharging reclaim. So that means we have a storage improvement system required. We have the potential for ASR wells to come online. Just to give some ideas of what's out there, we are planning some brackish water studies to look at changing our water source in the future. Those all have very large dollar figures attached to them. The expansion is subject to sewer over the 10-year window to meet state needs is also a very big ticket. And I can actually give out, we have specific needs at each plant and each part of the utility, spread out over this, we need some of the high points. And next year, we are proposing the replacement of multiple lift stations that are due up for replacement, and the filters at Blue Heron, that's a $3 million project by itself. The lift stations will push nearly 10 on both of them, so just to give you an idea.
Thank you. I was just curious because, you know, you see that big price tag, and you're like, well, what are we getting for it? So, Member Muscoso.
Yeah, I, to be honest, this feels like something that recently passed in Congress, where we even had a Congress member say, I didn't know that was in there. And they voted on it, and it went through. Our council members haven't seen this until right now. I'm a little nervous to vote on it, not even having the background information that Kevin said, like our mayor said. What are we getting? I didn't know we were a $4.8 million net loss. I don't know if anybody else knew that. I had no clue. So I kind of would love to have more information. If we're going to have to raise rates, tell me why. What do we need? I think that's really important. I don't think it's fair to our residents or to us to put this in front of us without really having the time. Now, I know that we have to get this out. I know that we can set the rate, and then during the hearing process, we can lower the rate. But I think we just need to do our due diligence. And I mean, I'm, this is my first year on council, so I'm trying to do my best to understand these things as well. But these are some big increases. I mean, and yes, it might say $2 for stormwater, but that's an 18% increase. And if you compare our city compared to other cities' stormwater. And so if we're gonna have to, if we need that money, we need to be able to tell the residents, this is where it's going. And I don't know if anyone in council can actually say, these are the projects that it's going for. This is why we are raising the rates. And so those are the things I feel like we need to be prepared with. For me personally, I can't speak for the council to move forward.
Member Nelson.
At one point, Kevin did give us the list of projects that needed to be done. I don't believe you were on council at that point, but it was a whole list of, these are the projects that need to be done. And I remember we talked about it, and we said, well, let's, this is, this is what it would cost if we did 100% of the projects. That's what it would cost if we did 70%. So maybe if Kevin could email us that information, that would be helpful. Because I, raising the rates, what are we raising them for? And I can't, I can't tell you right now what they were. But I remember Kevin talking about it and giving us a list.
And just to help, so normally, you would not see this presentation till the budget hearings. The budget workshop would have been, in the past, the first introduction to water sewer rates. So we're actually about a month ahead of schedule from our normal scheduling, and you would have had the proposed budget in front of you at that point. And you will have the proposed budget in the next couple of weeks, I believe.
We actually are, as Kevin said, we're a month ahead, which is why we're scrambling now to get this information to you. Normally, we don't do this until August. So we'll have, you'll have a month to review this, and then at the workshop, another opportunity.
But I mean, these rates have to go out soon, right?
But they, but they are not final rates.
They're not, I know, but we can lower them once.
Worst-case scenario-type rates.
I know, but do our residents, I mean, our residents are gonna see the increase and then wonder why. I mean, if I, if I got my bill, and I would just say, why are we? That's the thing you constantly see. We have the highest, they, people always say, we have the highest water bills, all of these things. And so I just feel like I, I know this isn't the final say. I'm not sure how the process always works, but for me, I just.
I understand.
And for reference, the prior year adopted budget does show the five-year projections for all the utilities. So there is a capital plan in last year's, in the current year budget that shows the four out years for the water sewer. We do not have a published 10-year capital plan because that's not how we budget. But the proposal you will get will show the 26 and the next four. When you get that book, it will show all the next five-year cycle. We extended that to a 10-year cycle for this rate study. And we don't have to fix the rates on water sewer. We simply have to be able to notice the residents. It takes us about a month, so we don't have to get that one fixed tonight. It could wait for the budget hearing. It's just if you're comfortable with 5% being the top of it, we would get that out to customer service to get that ready for the bills. The only one that is fixed at this point is a max would be stormwater because it does have an assessment notice requirement forthcoming. And just a little bit for Sarah and Miss Stokel, it's not Peter's fault that the rates changed.
I know, I know.
I generated the 10-year CIP projections to let you know the utility has a lot of needs that do stretch out. We, I did shift that around a little during that 10 years. But there are a lot of project needs out there.
No.
On top of, you know, aging infrastructure is a big item. We have a lot of needs in the water sewer utility. And I did, last year's projections were 8% on water and 3.75 on sewer. So the blended is probably coming in below that.
Okay.
Did you have someone else?
Yes, I just, just to clarify, so we're all on the same page. What I'm hearing is, I think this is a good information regarding our water and solid waste. We don't have to vote on anything tonight with those because we are early. My question would be, are we able to table the stormwater to next meeting to get more information? Or is that time-sensitive that you're needing a vote tonight?
So the letters have to be mailed into the people 20 days before the public hearing. The public hearing is set for August 26. It takes me about two weeks to do the mail merge and get 25,000 letters mailed out. So I think it would be feasible, but it would be tough.
Okay, so ideally, if we can get in, okay, motion.
If possible. But I think it would be feasible if we have to table, but it would be cutting it close.
Okay, okay. I guess, yeah, well, sorry, Peter. Because we can hear more information. And then if we have questions, I feel like we'll have ample time to get our questions answered for solid waste and water. And then maybe just as we're going through, if we need more information regarding projects and where the money would go to, history of the rate for the stormwater, maybe we can make a decision. So, okay.
Anything else from council?
Okay. No, it's all a very important discussion, and I should have kind of stressed the point that this is informational, this first part. We're not, you know, telling you what to do at the beginning with water and sewer and solid waste especially. Look at it as more of an informational dump on what we've worked on so far, but our work is still in progress. Okay. It may have. There it is. Okay, so the, what these tables do summarizes the actual impact to the average bill for water and sewer rates. We used 5,000 gallons as the average usage on the volume side. So there, in the top table, there's a fixed component and a volumetric component for water rates. In 2025, the average, the average payer pays about $30 per month. With a 5% increase, that would go to about $32 per month. So that's a monthly change of about $1.54, an annual change of about $18. On the sewer side, the 5% increase and a $37 annual impact. So the combined would be about a roundup to $5 monthly impact and about a $56 annual impact if the council decided to adopt that 5% increase for water and sewer rates. And then just one thing I did want to point out that goes back to Ms. Stokel's point a little bit. There is a, there's an index. It's the CPI Water and Sewerage Index. It's the organization that basically tracks the inflation for water and sewer-related costs around the country. And over the last 10 years, it's averaged, I think, a little bit over 5%. So on average, throughout the country, people see similar increases for water and sewer rates because the costs always trend upwards. So this next slide here shows the survey of where an average resident or a rate payer in Titusville, where they are currently in 2025, and that's on the left-hand side there. So towards the end, with the combined water and sewer bill, and then with the 5% increase moves up a few spots, but still under the average, which is represented by that black line across the survey. And then what this doesn't take into account is that most of the, these are 2025 rates for all these utilities, and the 2026 are the proposed rate for Titusville, it's the only one that's in 2026. I know a lot of these utilities have annual rate increases. We work with Cocoa and Palm Bay. They have about 4% or so, 4% to 5% increases themselves. So all the rates would be shifting up and most likely probably keep the same position in the survey. So next is the solid waste analysis. There's a similar slide here that just summarizes the observations and key inputs. The $27 million, the operating expenses, so the annually recurring stuff, is about $5.5 million. Then you add in the transfers of about $1.2 million and some minor debt service lease payments of about half a million, and it pretty much breaks even in 2025 with the revenues covering the expenses. So not a whole lot of room there, though, for additional capital and debt-related expenses. There is a vehicle replacement schedule that has about $9 million of identified vehicle replacement needs over a 10-year period. So that's the, that's the big driver on the solid waste side, is replacing those vehicles. And then we did assume that the city would continue to use that lease payment structure for those vehicles. So this is the same panel screenshot, but for the financial model for the solid waste fund. It, similar dynamics at the top in those first two rows. It shows the active rate increase scenario that we have plugged in. So currently, what we have working in the solid waste model is 8% increases over a three-year period, beginning next year, and then followed by 3% more, going down to a more annual inflation representative type increase. Those 8% do two things. They provide the necessary funding for that capital and vehicle replacement schedule that has been identified. But also, what we've input into the model is scaling up the fund to have its own reserve balance, similar to the utility fund. All utility funds, internal agencies, that they have some kind of working capital or reserve balance for unforeseen circumstances, equipment failure, liquidity purposes. So that's kind of scaling up to a two-months reserve balance in that fund. So the survey shows where Titusville currently is with your combined solid waste, so garbage, monthly garbage and recycling fees. And that's about $17, $18, and then the 8% increase would get you to $19, so it'd move you up one spot.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
I don't know if you mentioned if you worked with Melbourne or not, but why are they so much lower? Like, it's not even just like a little bit, it's like significant.
I'm unsure of that. I don't know, Mr. Cook, are you?
Yeah, most of these are gonna be timed when they were new, they're waste managed or waste pro contracts. And then depending on how those communities are set up, some may benefit residents by putting more on the commercial burden from the contracts. But the bulk of them will time into when waste managed or waste pro gets a new contract, which is normally a 10-year cycle. They usually see significant rate increases at that point.
Gotcha, thank you.
So this table here shows the impact on the average rate or monthly rate for, and again, with the survey, it's going from $17.80 to $19.23. That's a monthly change of $1.43 and an annual change of $17. And then finally, the stormwater analysis. Supported by stormwater rates, which as we're, as previously pointed out, it's an annual assessment rate, so it appears on the property tax bill, which is a common method of funding stormwater programs around the state. The current observations for the stormwater fund, it generates approximately $4 million in revenue, the vast majority of that coming from the assessment program. There's about $3 million of op, and debt service of half a million. So when you take the revenue over those identified expenses, there's about none left over. It's a break-even net income. There is a CIP program for the stormwater fund that, it includes recommendations, I believe, from a master plan and some other various items that the stormwater fund needs to fund. So that's, that's really the driver in this situation, too, is capital. And where no capital needs for stormwater, and there were no capital projects identified. Currently, the fund supports its operating with the revenues, so there wouldn't need to be an adjustment on revenues. The operating expenses do increase annually, so the only adjustment you would need would be to cover that inflation. But because the stormwater fund doesn't have sufficient funding to cover the capital needs currently, that's what's driving that rate increase in the scenario that I'm about to show you. So this is the panel screenshot, a 17 and 1/2, 17.59% increase in 2026. And that's so specific because we targeted a dollar amount increase to the annual bill. So it's a $24 increase to the annual bill, which works out to $2 a month. And the, the CIP that's executed, so out of that CIP plan that we were given, that increased 40% of that CIP that was. that incre, forty percent of that CIP that was identified. So that increase will achieve a forty percent funding of the CIP upfront. And then we have a recommended rate plan of two years of ten percent, two years of six percent, so scaling down, and then three percent in those out years. That allows you to get to a level where you can, uh, fund a hundred percent of the identified capital projects for stormwater. Um, and also build up a, a minor reserve balance, about two months of reserve for unforeseen circumstances. And, um, stormwater funds typically also have an impact from natural disaster to those events that could, uh, be burdened by the stormwater fund. The CIP, um, is summarized in this bottom three graphs, by the way, and you can see in that first year, there actually is a lot of capital in the stormwater fund, but it is all being funded through grants. So none of the stormwaters' revenues are going towards funding those projects. What the city can achieve in future grants will offset the impact, or the need for these rate increases. So if certain grants are achieved and, and granted, uh, that can go towards lowering these future increases. So they're not, you know, um, i- it's not set in stone that they're necessary at this point. But if you were to cash fund the whole capital plan, that's the rate increase plan that we're recommending. And again, the, the council's, uh, being, uh, asked to consider this upcoming year, and this upcoming year only, you're not setting a ten-year rate increase plan, uh, this is just. Next slide here shows the stormwater rates and the annual, uh, residential rate, um, for, for property owners in the city. Uh, currently in the green, so right in the middle there, at a hundred-and-thirty-six dollars, and then you'd be increasing to a hundred-and-sixty dollars, uh, which is in the orange there, so, um, moving up a few spots. This is another, um, w- as with all utility rates in the state of Florida and in the region, they, this upcoming year, so. Uh, stormwater funds are, uh, have, and I can speak to why Melbourne is so low and some of the other ones with stormwater, is that the level of service and the amount of funding support from general funds still varies pretty widely around the state. So, um, uh, historically, stormwater funds used to just be in the Public Works Department, in the general fund, funded through property taxes, and then over time, more and more cities have broken them out and provided a secure funding for them through an assessment program. But a lot of cities are kind of still in between, where, you know, they have a rate that might be very low, and it funds about half of what they need, and then the property taxes kick in the rest. Um, so they, that's how they kind of cover that gap. And more and more cities are going towards a self-sufficient stormwater fund that has an annual revenue stream that can support operations and capital. So that's something that isn't, you know, we don't delve into it any deeper than just reporting the rates in the survey, but a lot of these communities, you know, it's, th- how much they're funding with their stormwater program, um, uh, could be vastly different than what the, the city is currently looking to fund. And then finally, the, uh, rate chart here that shows the, just shows it broken out between monthly and annual, and, um, it's two dollars monthly and twenty-four dollars annual for stormwater ratepayers. And then our last chart here just summarizes the, if, if council decided to go forward with these, uh, recommended rate increases across the three funds, what they would add up for a total monthly impact across all three funds. For the average customer in the city, it would be about eight dollars and thirteen cents a month. And that's the conclusion of my presentation, I'd be happy to answer any more questions the council may have.
Member Mascozo?
Um, you might not have this, but Kevin, do you know what the rate increase was last year per month?
A dollar amount or percentage?
Yeah, dollar, dollar amount.
Uh, I can work it out, sorry. I have the percentages on the chart, but at the dollar.
Might be incorrect, but, uh, I just did a quick search. But in Titusville, one in ten of our residents live, already live under the poverty line. Um, and so they're, they're already not making it. Um, I understand that we have things that, you know, that have to be funded. Um, I, I totally get that, but I think that we have to remember, there are already people that aren't making it, and then every year we are raising, um, things. This might be an idea I should keep in my head. Is there a way, a- a- as I'm out and about, I often have, um, I meet employees and, and they say, hey, they'll, they literally will say, "We've got so many vehicles," or "We've got this, we could cut this," or "This needs to be fixed," or "If we had just fixed this, we would have saved money here." I don't oversee, um, our employees. So I'm very careful with how I do that, but I often get people say, "If we hadn't let that go, we wouldn't have to pay a two-hundred-thousand dollars for this." And so those are concerns, I, I know that it's a little too late right now, but perhaps we could put it out to an employee, "How, how, how could you cut costs? What do you see where we're overspending?" Because we don't see the day-to-day operations. But they often come to me and tell me, I've even had someone give me a vehicle number, like I'm supposed to track it, and say, "Follow where this person's going, why does this person need an eighty-thousand-dollar vehicle?" That's not my job, you know, that's not our job to do it. But, um, my first job was at Publix, I was fifteen, and they paid something like seventy-five dollars to a person if you had a good idea and you saved the company money. And it was just a really cool program, and so people were always coming up with ideas. Now, perhaps we could do something, uh, in the next year, I know it'd be a little bit of work, but if employees had ways or they saw things that we could possibly cut back, that we wouldn't have to be in this position where we're consistently raising rates. I, I understand right now, it looks like, eh, eh, from what we're seeing, there's not another option, but I would love to be proactive about it in the upcoming year, and possibly use our employees who know what's going on and where money is going, um, to give us some of those ideas of what we could do in the future.
Yeah, we can always do that, uh, whether we've done in the past, we can revisit that.
Member Stokol?
Yeah, no, I, I kind of tend to agree. I think that, especially with what's happening at the state right now, I think it would be very proactive of us to start thinking in terms of that. And I don't know what our percentage is right now with stormwater, but I do like the idea of us compartmentalizing and saying, you know, it's not coming out of general fund, we can say, "Hey, this stormwater fee that you're paying annually is going directly to this, this, and this," because, I mean, you guys know I like to post property taxes, wanting to know what people think about it, because I do think that will be on the ballot. And all types of ideas and people saying, but I, a consistent theme is, I think that people just don't know where their money's going. And so the best way that we can try to track that and show, "Hey, I, I, we have to raise rates," or "This is increasing, but this is what you're getting," and that was one of my questions I had on here that I, I think that probably staff may get frustrated with from their perspective is, we, as council, we set goals, and I, I've said it numerous times, stormwater is very important to me, and I think it's important to us as council, so I think it can make it hard for staff to say, "Well, you council are saying stormwater's important to you, the lagoon's important to you, we want to make sure our residents aren't flooding, but then you're not giving us the tools to make that happen." I think that's happened in years past with councils where they never raised rates. And then I think we've felt some of it, um, where we have to fix a bunch of infrastructure all at once because they didn't do that. So I think there needs to be an appropriate balance. My hope would be that trust would increase and citizens would be much more open the more we're transparent and we're showing exactly where, yes, this is happening, but this is what we're getting because of it, and I know that this is important to you, and there are certain things. So that was one of the things, um, that I had written down. And then the other one was, uh, related to the solid waste. Um, do we know what, or how, like, the county, for instance, or City of Cocoa, how do they bill their residents for solid waste? Is it a part of their water bill, or is it a separate bill? And we may not know that.
The, the county's assessment.
Okay. Annual assessment? It is, okay. Do we know about any of the other municipalities?
I believe Cocoa, Palm Bay are on their bills, along with Melbourne.
Okay.
We did do, at the potential moving solid waste to an assessment.
Yeah, I remember that.
So I think we have, and we can provide where we did some research on other communities.
And I think it was going to be more expensive, if I remember right, to do that. And the reason I'm bringing it up is going back to that transparency component, because we do here. Your water, Titusville's water bills are so high, but I don't think, um, a lot of residents know that when you're getting your wa- water bill, it's also sewer, it's all it's so, also solid waste, it's also recycling. So when you're comparing it to somebody that lives in the unincorporated area, of course, it's going to look higher. I mean, we did talk about that in previous council, and I remember talking to our city manager at that time, and it was going to be more expensive, and I just didn't feel good about doing that. I'd rather do more marketing and more educational to let residents know that versus spending more taxpayer dollars, so. Um, and then I think the mayor kind of brought up this point with, when you see the cost, um, a lot of these municipalities will use, uh, waste management or waste pro, and that's something I am thankful for at this time, that we have our own in-house, because once you make that shift over, you are kind of subject to what rates they, um, have, and it would be nearly impossible to go back and purchase all of that again. So I think we have a little bit more control, um, to make sure our rates don't go up high, so, um, I think that's all I had.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Cole.
I want to pursue something that Member Mascozo said, and that is, the ideas from the employees, and I'm not sure how it would be managed, but I remember back a hundred years ago when I was in military, if you made a suggestion that made your efficiency better, let's just say for an example, your suggestion saved a hundred dollars a year, whatever it saved, you got half of it. So that's the incentive for people to do it. I'm just saying that that's the way we did it then, um, but I think that that's a great idea, because those people are on the ground, they know what's happening day-to-day, you know? There's no way for, for someone at a higher level can understand all the intricacies of the things that they do and the things that would make their job easier.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Cole, city manager.
We did have a program about fifteen years ago to do that, we actually had an evaluation committee, and people would s- put in suggestions, and actually, they would get a percentage of what was like five percent or something. If they found a thousand-dollar savings, they would get, you know, X number of dollars. Um, it was pretty effective the first year, too, and then people were starting to embellish the savings, and then it was disestablished, but maybe it's time to revise that with a little more internal controls.
Yeah.
Member Nelson?
I like the idea, so, yeah.
Yeah, I, I can dig up the files on that, and, and we can develop better internal controls and evaluation processes.
But I'm also curious, I understand Orlando went way up on their stormwater rates, can you tell us about that?
No, I, I'm sorry, I can't tell you too much about it, just that I'm aware of that. I, I didn't work with Orlando on that, um, but it's, it's happening around the state. There's a lot of master plans that are being completed, and they show huge needs for infrastructure investment to deal with flooding, water quality, and stormwater is an effective funding mechanism for that. I work with Fort Lauderdale, they're taking out two-hundred-and-fifty-million dollars in bonds supported by their stormwater revenue to address their stormwater needs in the city. It's, it's a, it's a very hot-topic issue around the state, and, uh, so there's a lot. The stormwater fees kind of eased their way into public, you know, paying for it on an annual basis on their property tax bill and seeing it broken out, because in the past it never was. And now those fees are getting ramped up to actually cover what the true cost of, um, uh, of dealing with that, those infrastructure needs are.
Okay. Um, it might be worthwhile to have our PIO, uh, do some public information to let people know, this is what we're paying for, these are the projects we're working on. This thing could be very helpful for people to, if they understood that we're talking about our infrastructure, we're talking about our river, um, because those are the things that people care about.
Yes, to Member Nelson's point, I hear on a regular basis, fix your infrastructure. You can't fix your infrastructure without money. You know, so, and things are costing more and more every day, so, you know, it's Robin Peter to pay Paul if you kick the can down the road a little bit in these ways. But, uh, thank you guys for your, for your time. Uh, council, do you guys want to make a motion to, uh, to table to accept the rates, uh, uh, Member Nelson?
My motion would be to accept the rates as set out.
For stormwater?
Uh, for stormwater, water and sewer and solid waste. Because when we get to the budget, we can tweak them, to tweak what we need.
I'll second.
I have a motion, I have a second. And the city clerk, is there any cards on the matter? All right, any further council discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously, thank you very much. Appreciate you guys, sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry for being tough on you. Uh, before we get into our next item, uh, I'll ask Member Nelson to make a motion to extend our meeting.
Ooh. Okay, move to extend to eleven P M.
I have a motion, I have a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously, thank you very much. City manager?
City manager finalist, and I sent you an email earlier that Colin Basinger is under the weather with a medical procedure. Um, we've been attempting to contact associate at Utah, and I don't know, you got him? If you need him, we can get him via phone, but, uh, it's up to council to determine the way forward.
Is that all you got? I said, I've been, I'm used to using, eh, used to you reading the summary. Uh, city clerk, any cards? All right, let's call the cards.
Tony Shifflow?
Shifflow, Tropic Street, selection of the city manager. After viewing videos of how Brian Bultis, I can't say his name, I called him Butt House, conducts meetings in Claremont, badgering, interrupting, belittling, belittle, making small the citizens who deign to speak at public meetings, he should have been.
Can I just, I'll give you a little piece of information, uh, we got an email at six-thirty that he dropped out.
Oh, how wonderful.
You know, save that.
Oh, okay, because, uh, my whole speech was based on that, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna skip.
Give you your time back.
Thank you, thank you, um, saves me two minutes. Um, because I wanted to say, you know, at least our former city manager merely ignored citizens' inquiries with silence in public meetings, he didn't belittle us, and he saved his harassment for private activities. Um, so hiring a new city manager is an opportunity to change the negative direction our city has spiraled down into. A new manager who respects the citizens he serves is needed here to restore trust in our local government. So as you consider the other four candidates, um, I want to point out that there were at least eight opportunities for citizens' input that I outlined in the, um, search process, not a one of them was addressed. Had there been an opportunity for citizen input, this guy would never have been in the process this far, anyway. So in your selection, I urge you to consider a manager who will work for the citizens of Titusville, not the foreign developers who only want to profit from destruction of our land and our natural resources. Someone who will take growth with input from the citizens who live here. Thank you, and I'm glad he dropped that one.
I think he knew that you were about ready to speak on him, and that's why he did it, thank you. City clerk?
The last card is Kathleen O'Rourke.
Before I say anything, I'm just going to give my admiration that you did such a good job sitting through a very long, detailed financial thing, which is hard, but, um.
You didn't see me go to sleep.
You did really well, I have to say, I was losing it back there. But, at any rate, I stayed because this was so important, and I will just change what I'm saying quite a bit. But I will restate, I am very disappointed that the citizen input in this process was minimal and not at really have to fix, and that's, I was, why I was angry about the city attorney, it's why I'm angry about this. You need to include the citizens. We really care, we're here listening to the financial talk for all hours. Um, now, I do want to add, add a few thoughts. First of all, I was really concerned by the statement by the search firm that the role of a base commander is very similar to the city manager, and I am not anti-military by any means, but it's not the same. Um, command military structure does indeed involve giving orders, and it differs greatly from a civilian community structure where the city manager's actual supervisor. where the city manager's actual supervisor is an elected body, and in the chain of command, the ultimate bosses here are the citizens of the community who elected these people. This model, which is central to a working government, does not fit the military model. So I wanted to say that. And I will just allude to our prior experiences with Scott Larisse, who was unwilling to acknowledge or even look at citizens when they talked to them, and shows the fault in this logic. Quite simply, the role of the community hasn't been taken into account. Okay, so I have a whole lot about Mr. Boeltus, who I can hardly pronounce, but I like your name, and I will just add one other thing. I do think it's important to know that our City Manager will actually have the strength to follow through and instruct things. I find Mr. Body much easier to talk to, and I appreciate his respect. I did have a little concern, though, on the situation where Chief Lau was asked to come by Mr. Body to come to the city council meetings. You are his boss. He didn't come? What's going on there? We really need someone who's willing to take that step and follow. And there may have been things going on that I don't know, because, you know, you don't call me every night or tell me anything. But I wanted to say the importance of that, that we need a City Manager that really is going to be able to follow up on things like that, because that is still, he's still not here. I haven't seen Chief Lau in a long time, and it was my understanding he was supposed to be here. Thank you, and thank you again for putting up with that very long talk.
Thank you very much. Are there any other cards? All righty. Vice Mayor Cole?
Just to speak to the base commander role, I was a base commander, and the City Manager is not a base commander.
I agree.
Okay? I'm just letting you know that you were right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. Member Stokel?
Yes. I can tell you how I want to move, I want to invite all four candidates. So that's how I do want to move forward. I will say, I was disappointed in the amount that we were given. I don't know why some of them dropped out. I don't know. I'm hopeful that we'll have a good candidate within those four. I did talk to somebody that had withdrawn, and I think that was disappointing, I think, to see, I feel like, and I've said this before, I think today's meeting went really well, but I think that anybody watching our meetings, I'm hopeful that we can get a good candidate that will want to come into this environment and help move our city in a proactive way. But I think moving forward, we move forward with the four. Hopefully, we have a good candidate there. If not, we have some other candidates we can work with our consultant to try to get. But I think right now, I would have liked to have had more to interview, but moving forward, this is what we have. So that's my recommendation.
Thank you, Member Stokel. Now that we are down to four, and unfortunately, I had to request this from recruiter, so to everybody else, you know, full disclosure, we got all this information, what, 10 days ago, and it was only the information on the top five. I had to specifically request all the people that applied, and they finally sent that back today. But I would hope, I know it's short notice, but I think it might be good to invite a fifth, you know, just to have diversification, because who knows? Somebody could drop out in the next week before they're coming. So, again, I'm just, we're putting a lot of work into doing this whole hiring process. I want to make sure that we have plenty of folks to evaluate. So that'd be my recommendation. I know, again, just kind of looking at the list, it's kind of hard to judge, but, and then, of course, getting three people to agree on who that fifth person will be might be tough. But again, that's also why I asked Jolynn to extend the meeting. All right.
I take it back.
That was sneaky.
Yeah, I know, right?
I'm with Sarah. I'd like to interview those four. I know that the citizens will want to meet these people and form some opinions of them. For me, I'm looking for somebody who has a vision, who is willing to interact with the community, who is willing to use social media to get out information. For me, I get sort of aggravated when people come up to me and go, you haven't done anything for the river. And we have. And if we can't, as my dad would say, blow our own horn, who's going to blow it for us? Nobody. So, and the citizens need to know what's going on. The good, the bad, the ugly. If we have a sewer spill, they need to know. If we, that Sandy gets four grants for God knows how much that will help flood again. People need to know that. So those are the kind of things that, as we're looking for a City Manager, those are the kind of things that I'm looking for. And I think those are the kind of things that citizens also want. I will say, in terms of City Attorney, many years ago, I had a solicitor, an English solicitor, that worked for me for a year as paralegal. And we got into a discussion one day, and I said, so what is the difference between a barrister and a solicitor? You know, barristers are the ones with the white wigs that you see on the TV shows. And she was a solicitor, and she said, the solicitors have, and so you sort of want a cross between the two, because you want to have somebody that is able to take the bull by the horns, if necessary, but who is also very thoughtful. So I think for me, that's what I'm looking for and hoping to find Saturday. So I would like to interview the top four.
Thank you, Member Nelson. Member Muskoso?
Yeah, I would agree with the top four. I think it has been, I felt like it's been kind of a frustrating process, too, that we had to also email and ask for those candidates, and there was just a lot to it. I kind of wish that when, you know, all these other cities were doing their City Manager search, someone had recommended that I do it, and I didn't do it, that I had gone and done a records request of those City Managers that they didn't, or those applicants that they didn't, and then we could have possibly moved it a little bit faster. But, you know, we can interview the four, and then if we decide that's not going to work, then we can ask for more. But I do have a question for Mr. Bate, if you are comfortable answering this. You don't have to. Sorry. But in our charter, it says that our City Manager has to live in the city. Are you willing to relocate?
I've already looked at places.
Have you? Okay, I just wanted to confirm that. I knew that you knew what our charter said. I just wanted to make sure.
I understand. That's the reason why I didn't accept the role in 2014. But my circumstances have changed, and, you know, we'll see what happens.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Cole?
While I agree with the mayor that I would like to see five candidates, I reviewed 17 resumes today, and I didn't see anybody in that group that I would pick. So I'm not sure. But I feel that we should, if they promise us five, we should have five, even if one backs out. But I'm okay with four, because after having reviewed the 17 that were sent to me today, I didn't see anything that popped.
All right, so with that, I think we all made our thoughts clear on the matter. Who wants to make a motion?
Move that we...
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, who did that come from?
My apologies. This is Scott Crim with Colin Benzer Green Associates.
How's it going? I thought that was God talking to me for a second.
Listen, I don't want to speak out of turn, but I did want everyone else to speak first. Wondering if I could take a moment. Is that all right?
Yeah.
You have till 11 o'clock.
No, less. Sorry, we're chattering between ourselves. Go ahead, Scott.
Firstly, I certainly appreciate everyone's comments this evening in regards to this search. I will say, it has been a pleasure for me to be able to talk to dozens and dozens of individuals across the country in promoting Titusville. You certainly have a wonderful city, and there's a lot to promote. Now, I would like to comment on the current situation that we have, really only having four candidates to present to you. We did begin this search with very good intentions and relative success. We were initially looking at 12 candidates, 12 candidates that we interviewed and who were certainly qualified to be your next City Manager. Unfortunately, we did lose a few. Initially, that's, just so you're aware, that's very common. Good City Managers don't stay unemployed very long. Now, that brought us down to about nine candidates. Also, unfortunately, we did encounter kind of a mishap with scheduling. My understanding was that there was a scheduling problem with one member of the council, and so we were asked to change the dates for the interview. Now, we did change the dates to about a month later. During the last month, we lost four candidates, and then today, we lost five. Again, that's because good City Managers don't stay unemployed very long. So unfortunately, we do only have four candidates. I am grateful to hear, and I hope that we're reaching a consensus, that we're going to move forward with the events and interviews. Let me also say, we 100%, 100% stand by our, if you are not elated with someone during this next events and interviews, we absolutely will go back down. Our success is based on your success. And so if you're not happy, we will, we'll go back out, and we will do our best to find more candidates. I would like to emphasize, however, that among these four candidates, we stand fully behind them. They are good individuals. They are great managers. I'm excited for you to sit across the table from them and to hear their experience firsthand. I do believe that you will find great success in moving forward. And please know, we certainly apologize for not forwarding the candidate, the other candidate resumes to you sooner. That was our full intention, and unfortunately, it did slip through the cracks. I do apologize for that. But we do have four great candidates, and I hope that you are excited to interview them and to see what they have to say.
Thank you, Scott. Member Stokel?
Yes, thank you, Scott. I had a question. So you're, and I don't know if you have this information. You're saying that it's not, it's common for people to withdraw, because good City Managers don't stay unemployed. But when I was going through the resumes, a lot of them are currently employed, like a lot of them aren't unemployed. So my question would be, for the ones that did withdraw, have you guys had conversations to ask them why they did withdraw, so we could better understand? To me, that's, I get some people will naturally maybe get hired on somewhere else. They withdrew, and I feel like a lot of them were already, like a lot of them are already in positions. There was a couple, like, when I'm looking at the list, I think there was two, maybe, that were unemployed, but the rest of them were currently working. So that, I feel like, would help me to better understand why we had so many withdraw.
Right, and that is a good question. Let me also, let me just say that the majority, you know, they may not be unemployed, but they may be actively looking. And so that's a reality. As I'm looking at my list that's in front of me right now, just going through some of these names, you know, I can see some of my notes here that they did find other jobs as they were involved in other searches. We had a couple that just, we, two are coming to mind that did not give a reason, other than it was just a personal choice. And of course...
Any other questions for Scott? All right, Scott, thank you for your time.
Oh, thank you.
All right, so refresh my memory. We were...
My motion is to interview the four remaining candidates.
And then, did I have a second? I have a second now. And we already called the cards on this, right? All right. All those in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, petitions or requests, non-agenda items? She knows the rules better than you do.
Yeah, that's what she does.
All right. Seeing none on the mayor and council reports, I know this is kind of late, so I'm going to be kind of brief. First of all, I just want to give a big shout out to Tom and everybody that worked on Red, White, and Boom. It was amazing to watch firsthand how they completely uplifted, you know, planned year in the making, and moved the fireworks celebration from Chain of Lakes to Sandpoint Park. I thought it was a well-attended event and well worth the price of admission. In addition, a group reached out to me about trying to bring a disc golf course to Titusville, and they're actually looking at doing fundraising efforts to do that themselves. I'm encouraging them to do that on county parks, not city parks. So, and I think naturally, it probably makes sense at Chain of Lakes or Fox Lake for something like that. So Jeff Davis is anything that might need to come before the city. I'll keep you updated. And then, as we kind of, again, keep planning ahead, because oftentimes, we find ourselves behind the eight ball, like we did this past year in the legislative session, I just would like to remind everybody that committees start October 6th for the Florida Legislative Session. And therefore, I would like to ask council to direct staff to put out an RFP for a lobbyist. It seems like the general consensus of council over the past six months was that we should hire lobbyists to go after state appropriations, and I believe in conversations with Tom, he told me that it is a part of the 2026 budget. So with that being said, I think, you know, we should be in that process so that, you know, hopefully, you know, let's say, maybe the first meeting of September or the second meeting in August, we can put it as an agenda item for talk about priorities in terms of state appropriations. A good discussion for us. I think that would be a good fit, so that as we get through this RFP process, then we can have that commercials on our behalf to get appropriations. Member Nelson?
We had discussed that. We've discussed it several times. So I would make that motion.
Second?
I have a motion, and I have a second. Anybody like to speak on it? All righty. And this is just to put out an RFP for lobbyists for the city of Titusville, and discussion. Member Muskoso?
Sorry, just so the public also knows, that I think Palm Bay has a lobbyist, and they pay like $60,000 a year. So people have an idea of what the cost...
In the past.
Yeah, and I think the budgeted amount, I believe, was about $35,000.
$35,000 is what, that's pretty much the standard.
You know, looking at keeping things, you know, high intensity target, high rate of return, and, yeah, we'll just undergo that process. Member Stokel?
Yes, and just to clarify, this has been brought up several years. I've brought it up several times, and my hope would be, we have not asked for state appropriations. And to me, we had one particular year where I had talked to our state rep. It was the prime time, and we did not do it. And so for me, my perspective is...
Absolutely, and I think with the current landscape that represents all of our two Tallahassee, I think we'd be in a prime position to get something. So I appreciate, oh, sorry, need to go. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. And that's pretty much all I had. So thank you very much. Anybody else for council reports? Member Stokel?
Yes, two quick things. One, somebody had mentioned to me earlier this week, earlier this week, it's Tuesday, it feels like it's been a long week. And I'm going to look into it, but in case anybody else wanted to look into it, it's called Pictona at Holly Hill. And it was, I believe, a private-public partnership. And it was, I believe, a private-public partnership for a bunch of pickleball courts, recreation space. So as we're thinking about our land and things we're trying to consider for our youth, my plan is to look into it and see kind of what options. And obviously, we can't talk outside of meetings, so I would invite, if anybody wants to look into it, Pictona at Holly Hill, to sort of dig into it a little bit. Did you want to say something on that before I go to my second item?
Well, Pictona is, first of all, amazing. You know, and again, sometimes we take, like, an economically depressed area and we put a park on it, and that doesn't really bring up the value of the area. But I think we could start maybe a little smaller, because Pictona seems like pretty crazy. If we could develop maybe a public-private partnership with some of the non-used baseball field, that is no longer a baseball field, Marina Park, I think that's a prime location to develop more of a tourist-like, a tourist trap. You know, I was thinking, like, I don't know, maybe you have a private company build and operate a mini golf course. You know, just something like that. But again, along those same lines.
Just, yeah, thinking creatively, thinking proactively. And I think they've already made their money back on whatever it was, just because of how successful it's been. And then my second item was-
Remember Nelson has something?
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Wasn't that what the guy was going to do over Whispering Hills?
Yeah, I think there was. We had somebody proposing pickleball court. That's-
On Garden Street, too, right at Ninety-Five. That was about a year ago.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, that's it. That was it. So hopefully, hopefully, they're working on it. And then my second item is, as you know, we're meeting on Saturday to go over the four city attorneys. Again, I do wish we would have had more applications for that as well. And just talking to Mr. Stokes, just in between our meetings, he did assure me, if for some reason, we don't find a candidate that we all feel confident about, I believe he's willing to stay on a little bit if we, you, am I, okay, okay, okay. I just, I'm saying, I-
A little bit. No, yes, yes. No, I'm here for your benefit and whatever you need.
Yes. And if we did, and could potentially help with getting more applications in the future with his connections that he has. So hopefully, again, we find someone, but if we don't, it sounds like we could have him as, not interim, but like, sitting in and paying him hourly until we do find someone. So hopefully, I'm hoping for the best, but I did want to just share that.
Thank you, Member Stokoe. Anybody else? Member Nelson?
After I sort of was talking to Jim about the things that drove me crazy, and one of the things that came up was maybe first petitions and requests should be the people who live in Titusville. And over the months, I've had people come up to me and say, you know, we want to listen to council meetings, and we want to know what's going on in Titusville. We don't need people from Palm Bay coming up and screaming. We don't need people driving in from Texas to scream at us. We want to know what is going on here, because this is Titusville for Titusville citizens. So sat down and thought about it, and thought about what drives me crazy. Signs. Am I understanding that it's that the signs are supposed to be on the back wall? You're not supposed to have them up here. Am I right?
You're talking about the signs?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, they're supposed to be in the back, so you don't obstruct anyone's in the front.
Yeah. So we're not enforcing that. But the other thing that drives me crazy is the people who are coming in to videotape, I'm assuming for social media. And so they're up at their podium, and then there's people wandering around, taking pictures. So instead of listening to whoever's talking, I have all these people in my prayer field that's running around and paying attention to me. That's very disruptive. So my question to you guys is, what about advisability? To see what we could do to bring some decorum into our meetings? Would that be an appropriate way of saying it?
Yeah, I would say yes. And that's kind of what I was hoping to do at one of our prior meetings. So yes, I would be open to looking into what we can do to have more productive, effective meetings. Today was a great example, I'll be honest. Tonight was probably one of the best meetings I've had in a long time.
It has, yes.
Where I felt like we really thought through things. We had good citizen input. So-
Citizen input is great.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I know that sometimes the citizens don't think that they impact us. But there are a lot of times, they come up and they say, hey, did you think about this? Did you think about that? And they changed my mind. But when it's a bunch of people running around disrupting the meetings, is, you know, is bad.
Yeah.
So as somebody who spends a lot of time diving into the rules of council, because I have the unfortunate duty sometimes of enforcing all the rules.
Yeah.
One recommendation I would make to make it a little easier is that cards be filled out for petitions and requests, just like they do at the county, because then it's not me going, all right, who's next? Like, we know who's next. But along that card, the city of Cocoa has it, where if you're a city resident, you talk. You own property owner. If you're there to complain about your water bill, that's what it's there for. And so that, they have very clear rules listed on that card when you sign up to speak. And on the back, it has the rules of decorum. So basically, that would put it, because folks that come here, maybe it's their first time, don't know all the rules, you know? And I think if you're getting up for petitions and requests, you might not be one hundred percent familiar with all the ins and outs. So if we had, you know, people, you know, understanding the rules as they came up, that might make it a little easier. And then, to your point, then we'd be hearing from the citizens of Titusville.
Yeah.
So, but again, it's just up to you in terms of, you know, whatever motion you want to make, in terms of maybe advisability, or if there are specific changes in the rules of council you like.
You know, I totally agree with everything everyone has said. And, you know, I would love, back in November, or prior to the last election, I sent a letter to the city attorney, which we just kind of held on to, saying that we should restrict the petitions and requests to people that either resided in Titusville or had property in Titusville. Now, that, I was told, was not something we wanted to do. But I agree that maybe if we say the first petitions, the second petition and request, if people want to come in and complain about anything, they can. But we give our citizens a chance to speak first, then they can go home. If somebody comes in from outside and wants to speak, then they speak at the end of the meeting. So they have to sit through presentations and everything else. And if they're, if what they want to say is so important, that they're willing to wait until eleven o'clock to speak, let them speak.
So be it.
I don't think that there's any law that prohibits us from making a motion to do that.
Yeah.
So-
Yeah. And we're not prohibiting anybody from speaking. We're just saying that Titusville residents and people that own property in Titusville can speak at the first petitions and requests.
There's two other carve-outs for that, is people that don't live in the city that pay water, but they'd have to be speaking specifically about their water bill, or non-city residents who are employees that want to gripe about employment. So those would be the only two caveat.
Yeah, that's fine.
Member Muscoso, did you have something?
Yeah, I would agree about, like, that I'm totally comfortable with. I think people can have signs. I mean, they're able to hold them up, as long as it's not obstructing. So I do think people can hold signs, as long as they're not holding them up, walking around, and they can be in the back, from my understanding. Yeah, I would, I'd be okay with looking for advisability. So that would be okay with me if we wanted, we wanted to do that. So.
I guess my point is, the advisability, we're going to let somebody else tell us what we should do. I think that's our decision to make.
I think it's our decision to make, but I would like to know what Cocoa does.
Right. Yeah.
And get his thoughts on it as well.
I'm going to have to timeout the discussion. I need another motion.
Oh, gosh.
It's all because of-
Another fifteen minutes?
Fifteen minutes.
Fifteen minutes.
Eleven fifteen.
I have a motion to extend the meeting to eleven fifteen.
Second.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right.
You know, I'm an old man. I got to go home and go to bed. Come on, guys.
You and me both.
I know.
Member Nelson, would you like to make a motion?
So I would like to get advisability on what we can do to make our meetings more efficient, less disruptive.
Prioritize residents.
Titusville residents, for at least the first petitions request, so that they have the ability to speak and get their business done.
I second.
I have a motion, and I have a second. Any further council discussion?
I just wanted to make part of that. What I heard was, and if staff could look into anything that other cities are doing regarding disruptions, whether that's people wandering around during the meeting, whether it's holding signs at the front, blocking the views, what are some options there for us?
Okay.
Jim, is that, is that clear enough? Or am I?
No, no, that's, that's clear. And we definitely can come up with some best practices that are commonly used.
Yeah.
Could we also add to that, and this is very niche, but one time, we had a developer come up and put microphones. And I just felt that was a little strange. And so at least, possibly, if that's happening, we would be informed of what's going on.
Thank you.
It was just a little weird.
Thank you for that, yes.
It's kind of like people recording on Facebook. It's a public meeting, and anything's recorded at any all times. Oh, I, I get it.
I, no, I remember this distinctively, and one person didn't tell us about it. And I was like, what the heck is this? Another person did ask, and then I, I told that person, I said, only bring it up during that agenda item. I didn't want it up here the entire time. I was very intrusive. But I think just having a standard rule, if a court reporter's coming in to make sure that we're informed and that we know about it, and it's only on that agenda item, would be helpful.
Yeah, just assume you're on the record all the time. But there was a motion and a second. I was getting ready to call the public. Yes, you can come up.
Shipolo Tropic Street. I'd like to just point out who these people are that have been out walking around. It's people who have not gotten any kind of satisfaction. The mother who's waiting still to get the unedited video of her son's murder.
Tony.
No, she has three minutes.
Stan Johnston, who has, for years, all the years I've been coming, wanting to find out about that 2012, wasn't it 2012, the $70,000 study that he can't get a copy of? He's the one who brings signs. You're talking about a couple of specific things. Perhaps you're speaking about the redhead who comes up from Port St. John, but she has a business here in this town. So you can't restrict it to just people who own property. What about the renters? What about the people who own, like, someone like Laura Lee Thompson, for instance? You're not going to let her speak at the first time if she had something she wanted to present? I think it's censorship, and I really object to it. I study the agenda, probably more so than many of you. Did you know it was one thousand and one pages this time? I note that. Jobs. I have other jobs, too, but I take time to be informed about what's going on. And unfortunately, let me say this. I only get up and speak about things that relate to my community. And unfortunately, there's always three or four, maybe sometimes five, things on the agenda that relate specifically to my community. And I'm talking about West Titusville. Wanted to have it called, but I gave up on that. I just think this is a wrong thing for you to do. I really do. I'm turning in a card. Thank you for that.
Oh, thank you. I was, it was an agenda item. I was going to make sure everybody got an opportunity. Anybody else like to?
Let me answer something.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Tony, we didn't say we weren't going to let people speak. We said the first petitions and requests would be people that live in Titusville, or people who own businesses in Titusville, okay? The second petitions and requests, if somebody came here from California, they could speak. That is completely open, so we're not restricting it.
Tony, we're not, we're not getting back and forth. Well, this will come up again. It was just advisability, and that's not even what's initially going into it, because council asks for advisability. Staff can come back with who knows a recommendation.
Yeah.
All right. They might make a recommendation that you'd get to tar and feather me at every meeting and make it more painful or painless, right? So I don't know what's going to happen, but that's just the advisability piece. Thank you. All right. Any further council discussion? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Miss Nelson, Member Nelson, did you have anything else?
Not unless you want me to make a motion to adjourn.
I, I believe we have, all right. Well, hold on. We got to get Mr. Bate.
City manager's report.
Yeah.
Two informational items. Already beginning the meeting introduced Attorney Stokes. And the other info item is on the Ship Angel report, for your reading pleasure. Also, I just wanted to apologize for not getting out that presentation. We're trying to be more proactive this year, being a month ahead of time. Obviously, it didn't have the intended consequences, but at least now you'll have it for another month to read. Also, on a good note, the city manager's budget is done, and it is the lowest millage in seventeen years, 6.3 mils. It is 1.7% above rollback. It would have been rollback, the only city in the county at rollback. However, we had a little incident with a fire truck getting hit by a car, which cost us, and you'll be getting it on July 22nd, at which time it becomes your budget. And then you'll have the opportunity in August at a budget workshop to, you know, tear it apart and then make whatever alterations council sees fit. So we're excited about, budget is done. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much, city manager. I'm assuming Mr. Stokes does not have a report.
No, sir. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. With that being said, I will ask Member Nelson to make her favorite motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.